Begin with selectmen announcements and updates. Selectmen DeWitt, I think you mentioned-
Well, and I'm going to confess that I arrived back from visiting with family members late Monday night, and I only have two items, one of which I think you, Selectman Goldstein, are going to tell us about, which is, we now have a lot of information about Martin Luther King Day. It sounds like a great program, and I will not take your thunder. You should certainly explain.
Well, I want to tell everybody listening that coming up on Monday, January 19th, at 4:00 at the Coolidge Corner Theater, it will be the town's annual Martin Luther King Day commemoration. I'm very pleased to announce that former Congressman Barney Frank is our keynote speaker this year, and he was actually a member of Freedom Summer. And anyone who's heard Barney talk before knows that he is always entertaining, and poignant, and moving, and inspirational, and I'm certainly looking forward to it. In addition to that, we've got some real, really nice, and very proud of the work that the committee's done, bringing some enhancements to the presentation. We have BIG, formerly known as Brookline Access Group, preparing a short film presentation with viewpoints on race in town. And we have musical selections by the three a cappella groups from Brookline High School, and they've picked a program that's really inspirational. Very proud of the kids who've worked hard, not just preparing the music, but making the appropriate selections for it. Some poignant readings. And another big change this year is that Lloyd Jellino will be our master of ceremonies.
Good. Glad you remembered to tell us.
So, free admission, it's 4:00 at the Coolidge Corner Cinema. Any seniors should know that we've arranged for the senior bus to make a circuit, make its usual circuit to pick up any seniors or other persons who are going to have trouble with transportation. And for more information on it, please call me directly. Ken Goldstein, I'll give you my- [laughter]
Oh, boy. You really do.
Is there information on the website?
Yeah.
Well, I was about to say, if you can go to the town website, it's on the homepage of the town website.
You can also contact me at my email address, kgoldstein@brooklinelaw.com. I don't mind helping anybody out who has questions on this.
It sounds like it's going to be a really fantastic program.
Yeah, I have to say, that was quite a coup to get Barney Frank to come and speak. He is a very lively speaker at all times.
He is. He's terrific.
And I think he also has a kind of place, Brookline has a place in his personal and professional life that I'm happy that he was willing to come back. Look forward to hearing him.
Fascinating thing, and when you talk with him, he would be able to tell you the exact sections of legislation that go with some of these issues, and he has a mind like a steel trap.
Right. Absolutely.
And who worked on it, and what happened, and how it got done, so, yeah.
So, we do have another announcement, which actually I'm going to ask Mr. Kleckner to explain, which is an extreme cold alert. I gather it's going down to zero and below, below zero?
Yes, the Department of Public Health has today issued an alert to affected residents of the town who may be exposed to very cold weather, and I don't have it with me, unfortunately, because of our prior meeting, but I want to let people know that it will be posted prominently on the website and distributed to the media as well about actions you can take if you feel like your exposure to the cold is creating a health problem. Good. We also had a, I believe it was a three-alarm fire in Brookline this past weekend. I know Chief Ford is here. I wonder if you'd give us a quick rundown on operations and the efforts that firefighters made?
Well, as you know, we did have that fire on Davis Ave, just a couple of blocks from here. It was Sunday, so I was called in as whatever hits a second alarm, myself and my chief of operations, Chief Ward, we get called in. So, when we got here, we learned that our crews were sent to this struck box, we struck the box alarm for, because there were multiple reports of this house fire. They arrived to find a multiple family dwelling with heavy fire showing out of what we call the Bravo Side, out of the basement window, starting to autoextend up the side of the house and making its way into the walls to extend up to the other floors. Engine 1 was directed by the incident commander, Chief Sullivan. Engine 1 was directed to take a line down the stairs to the basement. At that point, their job is to try and put the fire out, but also hold it in check while ladder 2 was searching the floor above. Captain Tean and firefighter Tom Francis made entry. They split up their efforts. Not uncommon in a house like that, the rooms aren't that big, that we can do two rooms at once. So, they each went their way, and Captain Tean, fortunately, he had the thermal imager with him, and when he made the turn into the living room, he told me he could see her silhouette clear as day in zero visibility. She was lying on the couch, so he was able to get to her, ascertain that she was alive, and remove her via the back doorway where the engine crew was holding the fire in abeyance down in the basement. So, at that point, as the fire chief, if the house goes to the ground, it was a successful day. But everybody still has a job to do, and the guys continued to fight the fire, check for extension on the other floors. There was some minor extension. We actually ended up with some help from a Boston company and a Cambridge company on scene, plus all of Brookline companies that were there. The neighborhood is pretty tightly packed. We had exposures on both sides of that house, which were completely untouched. The house itself, while it sustained some serious damage, it's completely rebuildable. Structurally, it's fine, so we'll have that house back, and the owners will have that house back in short order. I actually issued a general order yesterday after receiving different reports, one from the deputy chief and different people on scene. I issued a general order to the department, reiterating some of the good points and the hard work that was done, and also Captain Tean's extraordinary efforts, and I awarded him a department commendation, and actually a day, granted him a day at his choosing. Something in a case like this is not uncommon. He was a little reluctant. He's been here for 32 years, and old school, and if you saw him on the news, and if you caught any smile, that's because he was told to smile. He, like many firefighters, it's funny in our career, we sort of talk not to speak to the media. Don't say anything. Shy away from that. It's just your job. You just did another day's work. Don't worry, that's not something to brag about. But there are times like this where I think that recognition needs to be made, and the efforts of all involved. Something like this, firefighter Captain Tean is very lucky that he gets to be in the right spot at the right time. But if he didn't have his partner with him backing him up, if he didn't have the engine company holding that fire in abeyance, if he didn't have other crews on scene checking other floors, if he didn't have the district chief, a deputy chief outside in control of the fire, if all those things don't come together, and we don't work as a team, none of it gets done. So, while it can be a one-person show at that exact moment, it is a huge team effort, and everyone did a great job.
And can I just ask you, because I bet my knowledge of this entirely is based on reading the story in the Brookline tab, but I gather that there was a resident in the neighborhood who really was very much on top of things and made the call and first identified the fire?
Well, actually, I received that information about four minutes ago.
Ah.
I have not heard that part about the woman until just now.
I see.
Mr. Waschinski, I know you were on the scene.
Right. The scene is down the street from my house, so as soon as I got the email from the town administrator that there was a working fire, I went down there, and I'll pay testament to the team, because it was clearly a team effort, and it was, it's amazing to watch you guys at work, and how everybody has their job, and they just do it, and it was quite amazing. I ran into Lieutenant Tarrington on the scene. How he found out was someone was passing by on the green line behind the house-
Oh, right.
...and tweeted at the fire department and police department Twitter account, which he monitors that there's a fire right next to the T between Brookline Hills and Brookline Village, and he then went down, he then called down to the dispatch and found out that, yes, it had just been reported. So evidently, the tweet came in around the same time as the 911 call.
It's amazing. Yeah, we're wasting money on that 911. Just leave it all to Twitter from now on.
But I'll just congratulate you and your staff. It was just an amazing, amazing thing to watch.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks to all of you for the excellent work. We kind of just expect it from you, but it is, it is great when you can have such a positive result.
Do we know the cause?
We have not completed all the investigation, haven't been able to speak with the woman yet that was rescued. She is felt going to survive. We haven't been able to speak to her, but we have a pretty good idea, and it's not suspicious, and accidental is what we're almost 100% positive of.
Well, I'm delighted that the person who saw the first evidence was able to get the call in right away, that you guys were there immediately, and especially had the technical ability to identify where the injured woman was, because clearly, she wasn't in any condition to respond. So, it was a big group effort, successful all the way around.
I'm certain if it weren't for Captain Tean being in that room at that time, and aided by technology, not that we don't have old school ways-
Okay, all right. The person knew how to use the technology and had it to use. Okay.
We have old school ways too, but if those things hadn't come together, I'm sure the outcome would not have been as good as it was.
Right, right.
Great. Thank you, Chief, and thank you to the department, and don't go too far, we're going to need you again in a moment.
Okay.
There's no one signed up for public comment this evening. We're on to our miscellaneous calendar. First is the question of approving the minutes from our December 30th, 2014, very brief meeting. I see Selectman Daley has a few edits.
That was Selectman Franco.
Oh, sorry. Selectman Franco has a few edits. Selectman Waschinski did. I did not.
I didn't have any.
And I move that we approve those minutes as amended and as edited. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Abstain.
Selectman Waschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next is the question of accepting a student awareness fire education grants, and Chief Ford, are you going to present us on these, to us on these two grants, fire prevention grants? Maybe not. We don't necessarily need a presentation on them, but if you have any questions, here's the vote.
I think we should take the money.
Right, yeah.
I have too many things.
I know.
It's close to the limit.
Aha.
Why don't you tell us very briefly about these two fire safety prevention student awareness grants?
Okay, well, as I'm sure you're aware, I've been before you in the past, every year, the state affords us the opportunity to get a SAFE, called SAFE, grant, student awareness of fire education. It's been going on for roughly 20 years in the state. The Fire Marshal's plan and program in place for kindergarten through second grade has made a tremendous impact on the reduction of fire deaths for children in the state, 72% reduction in the annual percentage of fire deaths. We in Brookline have been presenting this program, the SAFE program, for many, many years, and this grant is a non-competitive grant. We have to apply and show what we're going to do, and you're awarded it based on your community size. So, that $7,423 is the traditional SAFE grant. The amount fluctuates slightly year to year, depending on how many people, how many communities apply for it. This year, we're branching out. We're trying to get more involved with our senior community and work with them. I think you're aware, I applied for a grant, a federal grant, to aid in installation of smoke detectors and whatnot with the seniors. Unfortunately, that was not awarded us through the federal government. But we've, this year, we're going to also include a SAFE senior program, which will allow us to fund some educators to go out into the senior community, talk about fire safety. Trip and fall hazard is a big issue with our seniors, and different programs that are already developed in the Fire Marshal's office, that we will be able to help get out there with this as our start, beginning to have a positive effect on our seniors.
Great. Any questions?
No, but just a comment, and actually, Selectman Daley probably is more aware of this even than I am, but I know that we already have programs through our senior center, and it may very well be that you can leverage this by finding an opportunity to work with the existing senior center programs, which might give you an opportunity to get a bigger bang for your grant.
Yeah, I think it's, I think what you're thinking of is the Health Department has some money-
Oh, maybe it's the Health Department.
-that they have been using with the senior center on fall prevention, but this may tie in together in a, in a good way.
Right.
Okay. I move that we accept the following student awareness fire education grants, a grant of $7,433 to assist in bringing fire safety message to schoolchildren, and a $3,395 grant for more fire and fall prevention programs for seniors. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And thank you. We'll be back to you in one more moment, Chief. We have requests for four different temporary alcoholic beverage licenses. I'm going to take them in omnibus fashion. The first is an all kinds alcoholic beverage license to Pine Manor College in connection with a corporate dinner event to be held on January 14th from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM at 400 Heat Street. The second is a all kinds alcoholic beverage license to Boston University in connection with a reception to be held on January 23rd from 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM at 808 Comwell Avenue. The third is a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Los Anderson Auto Museum in connection with events, with an event on January 9th called Dancing With The Cars, very creative, at 6:30 PM to 10:30 PM, 15 Newton Street. And the fourth is a wine and malt beverage license to Los Anderson Automobile to be held on, for an event to be held, an annual members party to be held on January 31st, 5:30 to 11:00 o'clock, also at 15 Newton Street. Any questions or discussion or comments about those? Good. All in favor of those four temporary alcoholic beverage licenses, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Good. We are on to our regular calendar. We're about five minutes ahead of schedule, but that's fine. We have a question of authorizing the promotion of firefighter Scott Greider to fire lieutenant effective January 13th, 2015. Chief Ford, we need you again. Chief Ford, we need you again. Good evening again.
How are you doing?
Good, thank you. We were all saddened to hear of the death of Lieutenant Fields, and I know that this promotion comes on the heels of that sad event.
So, I'm sure it's a little bittersweet, but yes, we are mourn the passing of Lieutenant Fields, and, but tonight is about something else, and it is about a promotion. It takes a lot. This is always, I always say it's one of the things I enjoy doing up here. It takes a lot, I can tell you from my own experiences, to move up through the ranks and to prepare and take the time. It takes a lot on the part of the firefighter or officer looking for further promotion. It also takes a part, a big job of the family. I've always credited my wife with allowing me the opportunity to have some time and study and take care of other things, and please make sure you tell her I said that, because she tells me I have to say that. But if you don't have that family support, it's very difficult. Takes a lot. It's a competitive exam. It's based on a lot of books, and it takes a lot of hard work. We, I came, I'm sorry. We have this list from civil service and all very qualified individuals, but before you tonight is Scott Greider. He was appointed May 12th, 2010, not here that long, and he's done a very good job, and he's ready to move up. He's a U.S. Navy veteran, an EMT, and also a paramedic, one of our few. Recently, I've been working with Chief O'Leary to try and develop, and develop a program where we have some firefighter EMTs that are trained in more of a police tactical rescue to support the police department, and Scott has offered to, he volunteered to take that training and be one of those medics. He has achieved his firefighter 1/2 certification, as you know, that's something that's been big in my mind since I came here, and he has his firefighter 1 instructor certification, so he's gone and gotten that. Moving forward with that grant that I was awarded, he's on the list, and it will be in the Class 4 Instructor 2 coming up in March. So, I bring before you tonight a recommendation that we promote firefighter Greider to the position of lieutenant, and that promotion to take effect January 13th, 2015, a week from, well, next Monday, a week from yesterday.
Very good. Questions, comments, and board members? Selectman Daley.
Well, I'll make a comment. Congratulations. I will say, as I mentioned, I don't know if you were in the room yet or not, but I said to the chief when he was telling us about the recent fire on Davis Ave, that we expect extraordinary work from our fire department, and we are gratified that that is what we get routinely. So, I think you are in an excellent department, and we're delighted that you're getting all sorts of extra training, and I want to say to your family, we do, we do understand that, you know, sometimes the schedules are difficult, you worry about them, we appreciate your sacrifice as well, so, thank you.
Firefighter Greider, are you ready for this? You want to, why don't you come to the podium? Let us, let us get to know you a little bit.
Don't mess it up.
Well, tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you know that you're ready for this.
Let's see. I spent five years in the Navy as a helicopter rescue swimmer, and ever since then, everything I've done, I've been trying to just push myself further and further and achieve the next level. I think that my military training, as well as other things that I've done in my life, prepared me to be a good fire officer. I think I can, I know I will set a good example for the people that work under me, and hopefully make the chief proud and the officers above me, and that they can look at me and rely on me to get the job done.
Great. And you're not a bad public speaker on top of it. Selectman DeWitt.
I just would second Selectman Daley's comments, but also say that when people talk about Brookline, often they say, oh, people come here for the schools, and I'm here to tell you, people come here because they feel safe, too. And I think the fire on Sunday was a perfect example of knowing that we have the resources that are ready, we have the people in leadership positions who are experienced, who know what they're doing, and as we said to the chief earlier, our group, our team has, moves ahead, uses technology, and tries to provide the best public safety and fire safety, and we all appreciate that. I think it is a really high value for this community. Education is important, too, but boy, do you ever want to feel safe at the same time, and we do, and we appreciate all of the high risks that our firefighters take on our behalf. So, I'm very grateful to hear that you are trained as an EMT, that you have all these skill sets, because it says to me you're also a great role model for the next generation as they come on board, keeping my children and grandchildren safe. Thank you.
Anything further? All right. I move that we, I'm sorry.
They said it all.
Oh, yeah, good. I agree. I move that we authorize the promotion of firefighter Scott Greider to fire lieutenant effective January 13th, 2015. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think it's a photo opportunity, so why don't we-
Well, they have to pin them, they have to pin them first.
Congratulations. You take care of them. She's going to take care of us, right? I know about that.
No, that's not it. It's a phone.
Go ahead.
Go ahead and go ahead.
Well, first of all, I think we're going to be 8:00. Get the CIP first. I think we'll be 8:00.
Sipping a wine.
Thank you. We're ready to move on to agenda item number seven. This is the question of authorizing the filling of a vacancy in the position of senior accountant in the comptroller's office. Mr. DePietro.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Michael DePietro, Town Comptroller. I'm here tonight seeking approval to fill the vacancy in the senior accountant position in the comptroller's office. Just to give you a brief overview of some of the duties of the position, this position oversees the payment of all vendor, vendor checks, anything that's non-payroll. So, example, supplies, utilities, all the construction projects, any, any non-payroll expenditure, this, this person has oversight of all those expenditures. In addition, this person also trains all new users, new employees of the town that use the financial system, as well as reconciling accounts and general accounting duties for the, for my office. So, again, I'm seeking to fill this position.
Good. Any questions for Mr. DePietro?
No, except for your usual comment, which you were free to make, or I will make it for you.
Why don't you make it this time? Thank you. I was going to-
Well, it's simply that we are encouraging you to use every effort to outreach to the most diverse candidate pool, and we hope that you will be successful in increasing diversity in the department.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I move that we authorize filling a vacancy in the position of senior accountant in the comptroller's office. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Waschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. We now have some interviews for boards and commissions. The first is an applicant for appointment to the tree planting committee, Catherine Adams. Is Ms. Adams here? Welcome, please come forward. Thank you for coming. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on this committee?
Sure.
We'll get the CIP first. Thank you. We're ready to move on to agenda item number seven. This is the question of authorizing the filling of a vacancy in the position of senior accountant in the Comptroller's Office. Mr. DePietro.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Michael DePietro, Town Comptroller. I'm here tonight seeking approval to fill the vacancy in the senior accountant position in the Comptroller's Office. Just to give you a brief overview of some of the duties of the position, this position oversees the payment of all vendor, at vendor checks, anything that's non-payroll. So, example, supplies, utilities, all the construction projects, any, any non-payroll expenditure, this, this person has oversight of all those expenditures. In addition, this person also trains all new users, new employees of the town that use the financial system, as well as reconciling accounts and general accounting duties for the, for my office. So again, I'm seeking to, to fill this position.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. DePietro?
No, except for your usual comment, which you are free to make, or I will make it for you.
Why don't you make it this time? Thank you, I was going to.
Well, it's simply that we are encouraging you to use every effort to outreach to the most diverse candidate pool, and we hope that you will be successful in increasing diversity in the department.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I move that we authorize filling a vacancy in the position of senior accountant in the Comptroller's Office. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Dewitt.
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. We now have some interviews for boards and commissions. The first is an applicant for appointment to the Tree Planting Committee, Kathryn Adams. Is Ms. Adams here? Welcome, please come forward. Thank you for coming. I want you to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on this committee.
Sure. I've lived in the town since 1992. Again, my name's Kathryn Adams. I live in the Pill Hill area, but also lived in Coolidge Corner, and my daughter went through all the grades, so I happen to love this town. I really can't believe my good fortune in living here, and I'd like to become more involved. As far as trees go, I majored in biology, so I have some, I have a little bit of botany. I've got a ton of wildlife identification books, including numerous tree books, so it's something, it's kind of a hobby I do in my spare time. I have been on at least five walks, a lot of them at the Muddy River with Tom Brady. We did a winter tree walk last winter, invasive species with invasive plants with Hugh Madison, tour of Lost Pond with Marion Lazar, and then some other one with a park ranger along the Muddy River, and I've done actually a bird walk there, too. I've been a member of the Massachusetts Audubon Society for, since 1980. I've contributed to a magazine called Northern Woodlands. This isn't my trade, but I do have an interest, and I'd like to get more involved in the town.
Great, you sound like you're just through the Tree Committee, who's looking for you. Any questions or comments?
I just have a sort of a general question, and I'm asking it to you, have you actually attended Tree Planting Committee meetings ever?
I have not.
Okay. Because one of the, our Tree Planting, I don't know what you know about the history of the committee, but it was founded in the 19th century, I believe, we know it is the first one in the Commonwealth, and it has three members, and it's restricted to three members by statute, which is very unusual, and has to do with the fact that it was created at a time when either municipalities didn't think about doing things like that. I don't know the details of the history, but one of the thoughts that some of the members of this Board of Selectmen have had is that there are a lot of trees and only three people, and so I guess my question to you is, thinking about that, would you be open to a discussion about either, and there are a number of possibilities that could come forward, but one would be appointing people who could serve as what are called alternates. In this case, they'd have to be non-voting members, but they might bring a level of expertise and skills that would be available to the members, and then maybe even going through home rule legislation to see about amending the statute in order to increase the membership, just because in my discussions with current members, I think the responsibilities have expanded, actually, over the last decade or so. So I'm just, you, you are, you could say, "I haven't had any reason to think about this, and I don't know why I should, and I'm only throwing it out because you're a candidate, and there are only three people who are part of this committee as decision-makers," if I can put it that way.
Right. Well, just from hearing what you've said, I think it's better if people aren't burdened with too much responsibility. I'm not sure if that's what you're saying, but.
It's getting a quorum, to some extent. In other words, you, you have, you don't have a large enough population that if one person can't be there, you're down to two. That's kind of my pragmatic thought.
Well, I think being down to two is, is tricky and not optimal, so I just, right now, I think that I have no objection to there being alternates or there being more.
Or at least just a discussion about it.
Uh-huh.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Any other questions from Ms. Adams? Well, thank you, I do think you're, you're very, very well qualified for this. We're not making our appointments tonight. There is one vacancy, there's two, so far, two applicants for that vacancy, and we'll be getting back to you as soon as possible.
All right, well, thank you all for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Good evening. Next is Susan Rittling here for reappointment to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Hi, Susan.
Hi.
Good evening, we're doing great, thank you. Would you let us know what you've been up to on SWAC and why you'd like to continue doing it?
So, is this a three-year reappointment? I even lost track of the time, but yes, I've been with SWAC.
They are.
Not only three years.
So, you know, it's a great group of people to work with, I've really enjoyed being on the committee. There's a real sense that we can get something accomplished on the committee, and we have, you know, having pay-as-you-throw on the table now is a big, a big coup for the committee. I mean, that's something that everyone's really been working towards, and it's great that the commissioner is kind of on board on getting that going. There's, the state has encouraged that, I think, with some of their funding options, but we're looking forward to getting that implemented, and that's, has been a great accomplishment. It's not accomplished yet, but on the books. You know, we've, I think it's, we feel like we really have a lot of support from the community on the, what the committee is trying to do, and that's very gratifying. I mean, the recycling corner is always a very popular thing in the tab, and we do the Styrofoam waste recycling event every winter, which is always a little bit painful to put together, but, you know, we, we have a steady stream of people coming in, they save up their Styrofoam all year and bring it over, and it's, it's great that the community is so committed to, you know, kind of the same goals that we are committed to, so I think, you know, a lot of progress has been made.
Good. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, when is that Styrofoam thing, because it's piling up in my basement?
Is that Climate Action Day?
Oh, right.
Is that what it's called?
Yeah, so that's later this month.
February 7th, I think?
Yeah, February, okay, early February. My question, though, really, is about the, I think what we've been primarily discussing, and I don't know what your discussions have centered around, but is a kind of hybrid pay-as-you-throw system where people would get one bin?
Right.
And then one toter, I guess they're called, that the truck could automatically pick up?
Right.
And then beyond that, they would have to pay for the additional?
The bags, yeah.
Bags. So is that system the kind that the state is supportive of, or are they only supportive if you go to an entirely pay-as-you-throw system?
The state will support purchase of the toters if they're 35-gallon.
The smaller one, that's what.
I'm not sure what the exact mechanism is by which they, but they kick in some money for that.
And that's the size, that some people have the smaller recycling toters now, the, the kind of half-size ones, that's the size you're talking about?
Right. You know, we think almost everyone can, can fit their trash into the 35-gallon. You know, we have plateaued on recycling. There was a big spike when we went to single stream, and there, you know, we've kind of plateaued from that, so we need a little impetus to get people to recycle more.
Yeah.
Just kind of talking to them about it isn't doing it, so.
I must admit, I told the commissioner, I thought we were very good recyclers in Brookline even before that, and so I was surprised, actually, that there was such an increase when we did go to the toters, because I thought, I thought we were already doing it, so.
Well, we can still do more. It's about 25% of what we throw away is recyclable.
Well, I'll just say to you, as somebody on the committee, that, you know, I hope, it's disappointing to hear that some of the recycling that we do then gets incinerated, and I hope you guys will keep searching for the best possible place for our solid waste and recycling to go to.
Yeah, well, that's kind of the commissioner who does those contracts, but, yeah, we don't want to see that at all.
Okay, other questions? Very good. We appreciate the work that you've been doing and your desire to continue doing it, and we'll let you know as soon as we make our reappointments.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. And next is Elton Elburne for the Preservation Commission. I see you there, Elton. Come forward. Good to see you. Same question. Tell us what you've been up to, what you've been focusing on as a member of the Preservation Commission, and why you'd like to continue.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I've been on the Preservation Commission for a long time, but up until about, almost two and a half years ago, for 10 years, I was working full-time in New York, so I'd have to come back midweek for meetings, and so I attended most meetings, but I couldn't, I didn't feel I was fully participating in subcommittees and so on. Since I've been back, been in several subcommittees, and I think it's been really very satisfying work for me, and I think we've done some good work, so apart from the normal monthly business, which, as you probably know, has increased, it's the subcommittee work that I really appreciate being part of.
Tell me about the subcommittee work. What, what kind of?
Oh, like to.
On particular projects, or?
Yeah, well, right now, currently, we're in the Boylston Fairway Development, right up bordering Boylston Street, five, well, six, five houses, trying to get, work with the architect, the landscape architect, and civil to get the best arrangement responding to neighbors' needs and so on. This has been going on for months. It's one of the larger ones. Another small one, very small, 255 Clark Road, just small additions to a house, 99 crafts, large, very large addition to a house in the Chestnut Hill neighborhood, so it's, it's always a limited, you know, it's, it's a moderating function in which you moderate between wishes of the developer, wishes of the community, our own principles on the commission. I think one of the most successful is in Pill Hill neighborhood, actually, on Walnut Street. Is it 230, 337? 239 Walnut Street. It started out with, you know, really large proposal by the developer that I think the whole neighborhood couldn't stomach. In the end, I think we got something really pretty good that respected the neighborhood, the rules of the neighborhood, topography of the site, question of density, and not everyone was happy, but, you know, it was a compromise that I think was great, actually, in the end.
Great.
Great, maybe too strong, good, a good compromise.
Thanks. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I just have a question. You mentioned a Clark Road address, and I don't think that's in a historic district.
No, these things, that sometimes is demolition.
Oh, demolition, okay.
You know, it's been months since we've done that. It's coming, I think, either the 7th or the 8th, another hearing on this is coming up, but, so I'll have to read familiarize myself. That's one way we get them.
Selectman Franco.
I was wondering if you could expand on one of the future goals you cited in your application, making sure that the guidelines are responsive to emerging technologies and social needs.
Yeah, I mean, I can't expand as much as I'd like to, because I don't think we've done this yet. I think a lot about windows, you know, we've always struggled with the question of windows. Some of it's been clear, like we stand for historic, had always stood for historic window types, single glazing, real mountains, using storms with them and so on. However, we've never, I think, ever, as long as I've been on the commission, actually gotten a steel window replaced with a steel window. Usually, there's a compromise which isn't very good to something aluminum with a much fatter profiles. There are technologies out there with protruded fiberglass windows, which are very, very close to being the profiles of the original steel, so if we relaxed our own approach to it, maybe even wrote it up officially, that we might allow such things, I think I'd be in favor of this. There's a struggle often between, you know, energy conservation and, or at least a perceived contradiction between energy conservation and, and our rules of historic authenticity, and you, we often do compromise. I think we really are pretty good about compromising, but it would be good to define that a little tighter. For a while, it's not so much right now, but for a while, there were a lot of applications for rooftop, foldable take units and so on, and, you know, we were sort of making it up as we went along, and it would be good to, you know, maybe like have a study, a retreat, thinking about, can we formalize a little bit more our approach to this? And that does go on, we've done some of that reformulation.
Great. Tell us a little bit about the current makeup of the board, and whether you feel it's balanced, and we've got the right mix of professionals.
I think it's, there's a lot of really strong people on it right now. It's a, it's a larger board than sometimes in the past, but on the other hand, we have, like this month, we have two meetings as opposed to traditional one. This has been happening a lot the past year. There's a, I'm an architect, there's a satisfying number of architects on board, excuse me. It would be, if one could find it, it would be good to have people with even, more people with this background in the history of, of the town and, and architecture, but we, you know, strongly represented by the staff itself and by one or two people on the board. I don't have any real, you know, I don't have major problems with people on the board.
Oh, no, I didn't mean, I didn't think that there were personal problems, but.
I don't mean personally.
The right, the right mix, you know, the right expertise is.
Yeah, we've had lawyers always part of the mix, and, you know, it's constantly shifting sand of who comes in and who goes out to do other good things, you know, like help form the Neighborhood Conservation District Committee, Commission, and its, and some of its guidelines.
Great.
So, no, I don't have, I don't, right now, I don't have a particular, like, need for particular people.
Thanks. Selectman Wyszynski.
Recently, we heard a comment that there ought to be more coordination between preservation and planning. How do you feel about that? Is it a problem, and?
I don't know if it's a problem. I'm so, I really haven't thought about that. I think I've been.
The comment, I think the context of the comment was, sometimes applicants get whipsawed, preservation's telling them one thing, and then planning's all, that's not, they want something different.
Oh, I don't know. If that's the case, it shouldn't, it should be controlled. I think sometimes applicants tell us that they got one impression, and, and then when it comes to the actual meeting, the commissioners may decide something else. I think there, there had in the past been instances where people said they were, didn't receive the correct information regarding the need to come to us before they did something. I think there hasn't been a lot of that lately. I don't know whether it's more sensitivity in the plan, in the building department or not, planning?
Well, I, I think that it was the context of the planning board and Preservation Commission.
Not aware of it. I mean, I'm, I've always struggled, but this is, I've always struggled with the fact that we're a sort of bulwark against people's feelings or perceptions of overdevelopment, and to some extent, I've always felt that's not a proper role, you know, that, that if local historic districts are mainly about historic districts, which is slightly, I think, contradicted by the, the rules of significance, because that's what we rule on, I was very, I always thought something like what the Neighborhood Conservation District could become should be there, and was very pleased when it developed and landed in our lap, sort of, and if that could get legs, and I, it seems to me that the, at least the guidelines set up by the Tox death district are really workable, manageable, efficient rules, sort of not overreaching. It seems to me there's a real need for that kind of control of how we grow. Personally, I think that growth is necessary. If you, if you're against sprawl, you've got to be for densification, but then it needs to be controlled, and it needs to be supported by infrastructure that we don't always have control over, like the infrastruc, the mass transit infrastructure in Boston, you know, so we're, we're living these contradictions, very interesting, but I mean, how do you do, how do you grow and not, you know, burnout overload the systems that we have, which have so much trouble expanding?
Selectman Dewitt.
Sort of a nice lead into my question, I think, which is, since you have a nice historic perspective. perspective from your experience serving, my sense is the workload has been increasing substantially for, with, and I, because I look at the agendas, I don't, you know, I don't obsess over them, I just glance at them, but I can tell you that demolition cases certainly have become much, there are many more of those in the last two or three years than I remember seeing ten years ago. And with the addition of the Neighborhood Conservation District, and I gather there's some discussion about maybe another, either Conservation District or another local historic district. But my point is that there have been increase in number of districts and increase in demolition cases, so that's the background. What's your perspective on this?
Same perspective. I think there's been a huge increase. I don't know the numbers, I really shouldn't know the numbers, but it's, that's my observation. I talk it up all the time. There's, not just demolition, though, other cases, too. The number, as you know, that a local historic district for so long were two, and now there's, what, six, seven?
Right, right.
And so, the workload has increased. I don't, I think, seems to me, we're still able to do it as a commission, but I do, I think the staff is really overloaded. I don't know what to do about that. I can see that they...
Request additional staffing.
Yes, I am. That's what I'm doing. But, I mean, I know, excuse me, right. It's, I don't, I don't feel, frankly, I have the overview of Brookline governance and how to handle overall planning, growth, expansion, zoning, all of that. I just don't. It would be nice, it would be nice to, like, serve in a way that would, that I would grow, my own understanding, but I have, I'm full, just have a very busy schedule as it is. But I see this happening, and I don't know what all the answers are. And recently, I've been attending through membership of the Muddy River Oversight Commission, been attending a whole series of hearings about Back Bay ramps, for example, for the mass, to the Mass Pike, you know, and controversy over the Baucker Overpass, and can you take it down and restore the landscape, and what does it do for traffic? You can just see that the city of Boston, not just Brookline, is in desperate need of increased, desperate, is in need of increased transportation, and so.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you again for your continuing work and your interest in reappointment.
Very welcome.
We'll let you know soon.
Thank you.
We are moving now to preliminary review of the proposed capital improvement program budget, and I know Deputy Town Administrator Sean Cronin is ready with a presentation for us. Sean? Let's see, the CIP, I know the budget can't be far behind. Be there soon enough.
We're getting close to that. All right, so, as we've talked about a couple times, this is a little bit later than normal for a CIP to be presented. It's normally first week or so in December, but for reasons I think are pretty clear to everyone, we're a little bit late in putting this together, primarily because of the continually moving parts around plans for short-term capacity in the schools with the enrollment pressure. So, walking through our preliminary six-year CIP, you always start with a slide that really just speaks to the importance of capital planning in a community, and I think Brookline does a very good job of it. We have a great team of department heads that work in the financing it, you know, we work collaboratively to get this put together, and many cities and towns have a long way to go, I think, to match what we do here. So, some of the headlines, we have a $271 million plan, follows all of our policies. A hundred and eighteen of it is for the Devotion School Project, which is the most recent cost estimate from the architect, I believe. We'll have updated numbers soon. We have $6 million of classroom capacity in there, and it's 2.25 million in the first year, and then 750,000 per year thereafter, which is primarily for the leasing rental costs that are associated with the short-term plan. Temple leases for BEEP, some space over here on Harvard Street for Pear School, and modulars at the Baker School. That's what the out-year money's for there. Also want to note that of the 2.25 million in the first year, a million of that is funded from reallocating the million dollars that was allocated, appropriated back in the spring of 2014 for the first phase of the Driscoll School Project. As you know, we got the letter from MSBA that we weren't invited to move forward, so what we're recommending is reallocating that money for some of these short-term pressures. As been talked about at length over the last few months, it's not possible to fund the Devotion School Project and the short-term space needs without a debt exclusion, so what we're suggesting or recommending is a $46 million number within the CIP. That had been 54, now we're talking about making that 46, meaning that the debt exclusion would be $8 million more than what we had talked about previously, and that $8 million basically allows for the short-term costs to be funded. Then the MSBA would pick up about 25% of that project. And then, you know, one big note, debt exclusions will be required for any future major elementary school project or projects, and a portion for any high school project. What we've been able to do in here is, and I admit it's backing into the numbers based upon what we, what, how our policies work, but we have $35 million of town funding slated in here for a high school project. So, much like we have been talking for the last few years about devotion being X dollars within the CIP, and then the balance through a debt exclusion, that's pretty much what we're talking about here for the, for the high school. Some other headlines, more than 20% of the CIP is actually funded with outside money, mostly MSBA and Chapter 90, which is roads. Even with the pressures that we have, we continue to fund our open space, our apparatus for fire, fire stations, IT. This third bullet, this is new, we have some new items here that, a couple of which are directly related to the ORC recommendations. There's four strategic plans included in this, in this CIP. The first one is Strategic Asset Plan, and the second one is Planning Analysis of Large Properties. Those two are really an outcome of the discussions of the override study committee in terms of longer-term planning and looking at what changes in demographics mean in terms of town facilities. The second one, I'm sorry, the third one, we had money moving forward, and the department heads are obviously here to talk more detail about these when the time is right, but we had money moving forward for basically repaving and recurbing the Center Street East parking lot, but Economic Development Office has worked to really look at some concepts of what that parking lot could be, and what maybe could happen with Harvard Street. So, what we're recommending is putting that money off for the, basically repaving, recurbing the Center Street East, and having a study done to flesh out some of the details on that, on that conceptual study. And then the fourth one, to me, is critical, Public Safety Dispatch. Computer-aided dispatch is probably the most important computer system we have in town. It dispatches police, fire, ambulances. It's about a decade old plus now, went in with the, when the building was renovated. I think we all know technology's changed a lot in the last decade, so we know that some thing, whether it's an upgrade to the current system or an outright new system, most likely is required, so we suggesting having money in there for a study, we're going to consult and to work with a team put together by the town administrator to bring somebody on board to look at that. And then Village Square Gateway East, we've been talking about this for a long time as well, it's right in front of us now, and we continue to fund it all with non-town resources, state grants, and off-site improvements from Two Brookline Development, Two Brookline Place Development, and CDVG funds. Some of the major projects, I'm not going to run through these, just a couple highlights. Talk about Devotion School and the high school. We actually have, and this is something we've been working on for a long time as well, La-Z-Andersson, some of the work that was part of a master plan many, many years ago, that's making its way forward. The fleet maintenance and training facility, we put that in a couple of years ago, that's making its way forward. And then you see that we have some other apparatus where, in here, some parks and playgrounds as well. One other worth noting, the last bullet, the million dollars for the old Lincoln School. We have appropriated over a couple fiscal years, $3.5 million for this. The bids came in, and we basically had to kick out a couple of things related to heating and ventilation. The other was FFNE, so this million dollars is recommended to basically fund those items and make that building what it needs to be, to be in service as a school in some way, shape, or form over the next however many years it's going to be there. Then we continue to significantly invest in our infrastructure, our open space, our streets and sidewalks, water and sewer, et cetera, and this is really the cornerstone in the CIP. You know, there's a lot of standalone projects, but there's also a lot of continued investment, which is what a CIP's supposed to be all about. Just to highlight a couple of the key areas, so, over the six years for schools is over almost $204 million. We talked about devotion in the high school, and the need for potential debt exclusions in the future as well, and then the increase or the addition of $6 million of classroom capacity for those off-site spaces. Parks and open space, there's almost $16 million over the six-year period for 14 individual projects. On top of that, there's 4.3 million for ongoing work to parks and open spaces. Fire apparatus in the facilities, we continue to modernize the fleet. We've got two more pieces of apparatus in the six-year cycle. That's on top of the six that have been added over the last decade. And we continue a rehab program that was begun about several hundred years ago. The fleet maintenance facility is in here, you see it's in fiscal 17 at 4.5 million dollars, and the mechanical, electrical plumbing for all the fire stations is included, and that's really the last piece of a study that was done about three or four years ago to bring the fire stations, the five fire stations up to where they need to be. Infrastructure in the public works realm, we have a couple standalone significant projects, Gateway East and the Riverway Bike Ped Project, both of which are all funded with outside monies. And then you have traffic calming, street rehab, sidewalks, LED projects, and some water and sewer, continue to upgrade those systems. So, a very significant amount of money in here, 38% of which is funded with outside monies, and also note that we continue to follow the 2008 override recommendation, which was to increase these core items, streets and sidewalks, by two and a half percent a year, something we weren't doing prior to that. So then, just to walk through how the financing policy works again, we have a seven and a half percent financing policy, 6% of ongoing revenue, and one and a half percent from free cash to get you to a total of seven and a half percent. And within the 6%, we've got the box over on the left, we have a goal of four and a half percent from debt, it's normally 5%, a little bit more than 5%, and the balance coming from tax financed or revenue financed or pay-as-you-go capital, which is normally around about 1%. So, for this, this year, we have $10.2 million of revenue finance CIP, 4.9 of which comes from the 6% policy, 4.2 million comes from free cash. It's those two items that get you to the seven and a half percent policy in terms of the revenue finance side. In addition to that, we have $50,000 from cemetery trust funds and a million dollars from the Driscoll School account that was, we're recommending be reallocated for classroom capacity. On the debt side, we have a total of $12 million, 8.3 of which is the component of the 6% policy. 1.1 million is standalone debt exclusion, and that's the high school. That's all that is now, that's what's left. And then, our golf course and our water and sewer enterprise are fully, what, they're 100% self-supporting, they fund their own debt service in their own budgets. So, when you add this all up, there's $12 million of debt and planned for in fiscal 16 of debt service. Free cash, free cash plays an important role in a number of things for the town, reserves, capital, affordable housing, and what we're doing is following policy again in this fiscal 16 plan. We had a certification of just under $7.6 million, and if you follow the policies which are listed above, you see that about a half a million goes toward our operating reserve. We're recommending that $2.5 million basically be left unallocated for undesigned, unassigned fund balance purposes, which is something that we've highlighted over the last few years, that it's something that Moody's had tweaked us with a couple times. We've elevated that a little bit, but we took a minor step back with fiscal 14, and we believe, we feel as though we need to sit on $2.5 million in order to really make sure we stay above that 10% threshold. In terms of what this means for the capital budget, if you follow the policy, $3.3 million goes to the capital plan in order to get you from 6% to seven and a half percent. Then, after all is said and done, there's $924,000 left. In the past, this has gone to OPEB's or pensions or workers' comp or IOD fund, things like that. Last year, it all went to the CIP. This year, we're recommending the same thing, and that's really to support all these projects that have placed a lot of pressure on the CIP. In terms of, you know, how this, how does this look over a six-year period in terms of funding? I know sometimes it's a little bit difficult to understand, but we put this up each year to try to show that, using 16 as an example, there's 19 and a half million dollars of the town's revenue stream going to the capital budget, 13.2 of which is part of the 6% policy, and you'll see how it's broken up between debt and pay-as-you-go, basically 8 million or 3.8% for debt, and almost 5 million is pay-as-you-go. And then on top of that, you add free cash, that 4.2 million dollars. And then on top of that, you add any one-time items that we have, which this year was that reappropriation of the Driscoll School monies. And then, on top of that, is the standalone debt exclusion numbers. And just to highlight a couple of things, you'll see that the policy is 7.5. In the first year, we actually get to 8.4 million, I'm sorry, 8.4%, and that's because of the additional free cash and the million dollars. In the out-years, you'll see each year 7.5, so we're building a plan based upon our policies. The last line there shows that when you add in debt exclusions, you get up to, in the first year, 9%, and then 8, and then it jumps back up to over 9%. That's because if you look at the debt exclusion number in fiscal 19, that's when we anticipate the Devotion School debt service coming online. So, you see the jump from 1,002 to 4.15, that's devotion kicking in right there. So, I mentioned earlier that a significant portion of the CIP is funded from outside monies. You can see here, state and federal grants, MSBA monies, Chapter 90 monies, proposed private development from the Two Brookline Place for some off-site work that will go to, toward the Gateway East Project. CDVG funds, I think what I gave you in the packet has a bunch of question marks next to, that was a typo, I'm sorry. Although, I should say that, I know Erin was up here a week or two ago saying that she was fortunate enough to get a very significant grant from the state based on that, we actually might not have to use that $250,000 for the Bike Ped Path Project. But cemetery funds, we've talked about this for a couple of years, too, about really utilizing those funds to support capital, and there's a big one a few years out, which is a lot expansion, and, you know, in a few years, we'll talk about, does it make sense to actually borrow for that and have cemetery revenues paid for the debt service, or does it make sense just to use a one-shot infusion from those funds to pay for it? But it's scheduled in here, and we'll make its way forward. Financing summary, just to highlight here, you see that debt basically pays for 60% of this, it's the bottom two parts of the pie chart. Debt exclusion is about 16%, and general fund bonds within the 6% policy is 44%. And then you have about 14% funded from ongoing revenues, which is the property tax and free cash. Category summary, this is what I think you would expect to see in a CIP, that, you know, more than three-quarters of it's going to renovate and repair our facilities, 12% is going into our infrastructure, and almost 8% is going into our parks and open space. I modify these a bit from what I, what I put in the packet. This is somewhat more readable, I think, but we say each year, it's really important for, you can, it looks better on a piece of paper. It's really important for people, I think, to get a sense as to what's driving our capital plan, and, you know, we talk about debt service, and how can you afford a $40 million project, or how can you do this? So, what we do for folks is show what the bond authorization is, what we actually plan on borrowing, what our term is going to be or plan to be, and then you can see what our estimate is for principal and interest payments going out. So, if people, you know, say, well, how can you afford a, you know, let's pick one, million-dollar old Lincoln School, which I highlighted earlier? Yes, it's a million dollars, but what that cost us is $143,000 in the first year, et cetera. So it's really important to have folks get an understanding as to what our borrowing plan is, and we also work, what we show this obviously to the ratings agency, and we have our annual call with them, and they appreciate seeing our long-term plan for borrowing. So obviously, when you borrow money, you have to pay it back, and one thing we've highlighted each year and we're proud of is we have a pretty good rapid amortization of our debt, and that's the grayish bottom part of this graph. You'll see that right now, we're at 8.24 million dollars, and then it drops off to $5 million, so a pretty good clip. That allows you to take on new debt. So you know, if you have, and this was that debate about level debt versus level principal, if you have level principal, that runs off more quickly, and you're able to take on additional projects. So you can see that downward trend there. The next box is the current debt service for the high school. You see that that expires after fiscal 20, that last $750,000 payment, then that's gone. The next box, the reddish box, that is the debt service associated with all these projects that you see in the plan, in that debt management plan. And then the top box is basically the devotion school, the debt exclusion component of the devotion school. So our estimate now is, once it fully kicks in, it's 3.2 million dollars of debt service for 25 years, that would be added to the tax levy. Just the last couple more things before we turn it over to questions of department heads for specific projects. This is something that we talked about two years ago, which is the split between debt financed and revenue financed. And two years ago, we highlighted an issue, and we actually, if you go back, we highlighted it in years prior to that. Where if you look at fiscal 18, because of the pressure of the debt exclude, of the devotion school project, we had very little pays-as-you-go capital. If you look at on the left, it was 0.3%. If you look at on the right in dollar values, it was only $800,000. What that does is it reduces your flexibility. You know, it's not something that's going to raise a major red flag with the ratings agencies or anything, but the purpose of having a pays-as-you-go portion of capital is if you ever needed to pull back on capital for some reason, you actually have the ability to do that. Once you float debt, you can't. So we highlighted this. And then last year when we were here, we said, well, if you follow the plan that we presented, which was basically to exclude all of the devotion school, which freed up capacity for the then conceived Driscoll project and something for the high school, one of the added bonuses to that was it pretty much normalized the split. You see on the left, it's pretty much 2% and 4%, and on the right on the dollar values, you see it's about four plus million dollars a year as pays-as-you-go. So it kind of normalized that problem that we had. Now we're back to where we were a couple of years ago, which is, if you look at fiscal 18, on the right, we go from about $4 million of pays-as-you-go down to 1.7, and then it shrinks even more, and then it gets worse. My purposely went further out on this one, so you could see what happens once the high school kicks in. So again, we've got some money included in here, $35 million of town share for a high school project, and we actually ban it for a couple of years, I think for three years, in order to actually make that affordable. But if you look at fiscal 23, there's hardly any pays-as-you-go capacity, so it's pretty much back to where we were a couple of years ago. It's something that can be solved over the years, and again, it's not something that I think will raise any major red flags, because we're still living within our policies, it's just something that reduces your flexibility as you go forward, and you talk about, is there any way to pull back on capital like we had to a couple times when we had some bad economic times? Last two things, just debt service. Pretty standard metric that the rating agencies use is how much of your revenue is going to debt. And what I like to do here is break out, yes, we have a lot of debt service. It's 12 million dollars in total, but we are a quarter of a billion dollar entity, and we actually, if you break this down a little bit, you'll see that the ongoing revenue stream is only paying for about, looking at 15, 8.3 million dollars of our debt. You know, half a million is being paid for by the state from the old MSBA program to reimburse for projects. The Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund is picking up 2 million of their debt, the golf course is picking up 200,000 of their debt. So yes, it's a total of 12 million dollars, but ongoing revenue, 8 million dollars of that, is, 8 million dollars of ongoing revenue is supporting the debt service budget. And then that metric, if you look at the bottom, again, looking at fiscal 15, if you go to the very bottom line, 4.4% of total revenue is debt service, which is a pretty low number. You know, the ratings agencies look for somewhere between 5 and 10. So I think the real number to look at is the reddish line, net general fund debt as a percent of general fund revenue. You'll see we're below 4%, but it does ratchet up once you take on the debt exclusion project, I'm sorry, I keep saying debt exclusion. The devotion school project, you see it kicks up to about 6%, and then it starts to come down a little bit, then kicks up again once the high school project kicks in. So you know, we are well within the, you know, 5 to 10% range that the ratings agencies look for, and if they do say to us, which they might occasionally, geez, that might seem to be in the low end, we remind them of our pays-as-you-go portion of it, and say that really, if you do the math our way, seven and a half percent of our revenue, our ongoing revenue, is earmarked for capital, which is literally right in the sweet spot of their 5 and 10%. And then just lastly, I know you can't read it, but every year we put it up there so that folks can see that we live by all of our policies. So we have a lot of very specific policies that we're supposed to live by in terms of how much debt we take on, and compare that on a per capita basis as a percent of property values, how quickly it amortizes. You'll see that we live within all of those policies, which is great. So that's kind of like the big picture and how we finance it. I'll certainly answer, attempt to answer any of those financing type questions, but you have all the experts in their field here to talk about the specific projects.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate that very informative presentation. Questions for Sean before we open it up broadly? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I am still struggling to fit all this together, but I know there is money in there for modular classrooms at Baker School.
Correct.
Rental space for the BEEP program.
Correct.
The 35.1 million for Brookline High School, including 1.1375 in '17, is that, that's for the feasibility study, right?
Yes, so the, if you add those two numbers up, if you look up here, there's the town share of 1.137 and the state share of 612,000. That 1.75 million is what we're estimating will be the cost for the first phase of feasibility and schematic design. So statement of interest would be submitted in this coming spring, and then if MSBA, just say in November, were to, you know, invite us to the next stage, then we'd be able to, even though this says it's '17, it's bonded. So we'd be able to go to the fall town meeting or if a special needed to be called, and get that bond authorization, because we don't really spend that money until later on anyway. So it's not a cash flow issue. So it's shown as fiscal '17, but if we need to, that could happen at the fall town meeting of calendar '15.
Okay, but my question I want to get at is, you're assuming we're going to do a project on our existing high school campus, or, because, I mean, I have heard people suggest various things like trying to buy the property that's kind of right at the bridge, I think it's a Brigham and Women's Hospital building currently, and...
This number, I'll say two things to that. One, this number assumes nothing. It's literally a mathematical process, backed into what, under the seven and a half percent policy, could we afford? And it's 35.1 million. And then you're back into the state share, so we're saying that within our policies, we could afford that much money. And then anything above me on that would need a debt exclusion. The second thing I would say probably more important than that is, you know, there was a study underway, there was, I think it was $100,000 authorized for a firm to come in and do a study. So if there's questions about what they're looking at...
I think they're looking at elementary schools though, aren't they?
No, that's a different one.
Okay, okay. Because, I mean, my question is, if we need to, it seems to me like we've been a couple of steps behind on all of these school capacity issues, and so, you know, maybe we have to be thinking about raising the debt exclusion for devotion slightly in order to free up some money for either the high school or the, is the only money that's in there for Pierce? You mentioned some rental space for Pierce. What about a more permanent solution at Pierce? Is there...
I'll defer to the schools on these questions.
Okay.
Superintendent Lapini?
Happy New Year. So with respect to the high school, the concept study that they're doing is actually looking at a number of different options. It's looking at an on-campus set of solutions. They're looking at a two-campus, two-school set of solutions, site yet to be determined. They're looking at a one-school with additional buildings on that campus, right? Campus could mean as far away as old Lincoln School. So they're looking at all those options right now in a concept study that will really inform a statement of interest should you and the school committee decide that Brookline High School is the appropriate statement of interest to submit in April, okay?
I guess my concern here is, because things are going to be very tight, and we're going to have very little flexibility on the CIP for a few years there. And so that's why I just wonder, you know, do we, do we need to adjust the debt exclusion override for devotion in order to make sure there's a little more flexibility there or not?
So I would just say that I don't think the 35 million that's there in the CIP for high school is anybody's estimate of what a high school project will cost. I believe that's merely a mathematical calculation of what's available at this point. That's as far as I should go in an answer. But to your question about Pierce and other locations, what's in all of this at present for Pierce is our short-term plan, right? The rental of space in order to create a five-section per school building, essentially. What's in here for Baker is a short-term plan that can be consolidations and/or modulators, right? The longer version of the short-term plan is modulators. There is not short of the ninth school solution, if you will. There is not a long-term plan for those two schools. Other schools are less pressed, there are issues obviously at those locations as well, but there is not a longer-term plan for Pierce or Baker beyond the short-term plans that we've put in place. The good news about certain strategies that we can employ at devotion, with respect to your question about us being behind on a number of these projects, is that if the timelines work on devotion, we would have old Lincoln available in either September of 2019, or if we were able to move all of the students off the devotion campus, there's a possibility we could have it available in September of 2018. Both of those fit our needs at Brookline High School in terms of having additional space available. So for some number of years, we would need and would have available old Lincoln School for use as part of the high school campus until a longer-term solution was put in place.
Okay. So, but what about Pierce? Should there be, should we be trying to free up some money for a more permanent solution?
Well, I, so, I think you're going to need to see what comes out of the study that you've commissioned, and what kinds of solutions that provides you with in terms of being able to solve the longer-term problems at Baker, Pierce, and other locations, right? You know, the Driscoll solution that was on the table, and I understand still will be part of the conversation by that ninth school consultant, was meant to solve Pierce problems, right? It's solved Pierce enrollment problems...
As well as Driscoll's own problems, yes.
And as well as Driscoll's own problems, as well as problems for other schools by the use of buffer zones, right? So you're going to need, out of that study, and I know the consultants know this, you're going to need solution or solutions that help bring together a number of these factors.
Can I ask Selectman Daley's question perhaps a little different way? I've seen a recommendation from staff to add additional capacity to the debt exclusion override somewhere in the range of $8 million, that's the number that's coming before us. So are we going to have a good, sound justification for that number that we can tell the voters?
It's exactly the classroom capacity. So if you pretend that $8 million, you borrow it, you finance it, the debt service is in that ballpark of $750,000 a year, because that $750 in the out-years was not in the current CIP. So in order to find capacity for that, without kicking out other projects or dramatically revamping the CIP, you need the capacity. You get that capacity by taking some of the devotion project off the CIP and onto the debt exclusion. Any number higher than that, and this is what we had talked about a couple of weeks ago, I think it gets a little bit difficult to point to what does that additional capacity go to, because we don't know what else there is. But this is something concrete that we can say, it's going to this, it's going to this, and it's going to this for those...
So just to be clear, because I do think I understand both the question and the answer, at the moment, in the short term, this figure that we're carrying for classroom capacity is used to rent additional space or to provide modulators or whatever, but it's a flexible number that as devotion comes online and other needs, well, as we address some of the classroom needs, and then there a different kind of need, that could be used for debt service for whatever capital...
Sort of. The, so if you look at the current fiscal '15 through '20 CIP, you'll only see money in fiscal '15 in zeros in '16 through '20, because we had talked about having the override, operating override, pay for those. So put those into the school department budget to pay for the leases. Then over the last few months, what we're talking about is ways to kind of get that number down. Town administrator recommending putting those into the CIP. So the way you can free up that capacity to pay for those is by reducing the $54 million that was financed via the CIP and increase the debt exclusion by that same $8 million. So that $8 million basically finances, not literally, but technically finances that $750,000 a year for those off-site rentals.
And, but I think I heard you say, and really this was kind of why it's extended out through FY 2021, is that as we address the classroom needs either through devotions online, I don't know what other solution there might be, this gives us, the projection assumes that that could be added to debt service in order to provide whatever the other high school, let's say?
Well, just looking at this six-year cycle, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anybody's of the belief that there won't be the need for off-site space for BEEP, for Pierce, and for Baker within this cycle. So if that's true, then there isn't any additional capacity above and beyond this.
Okay, the cycle meaning all the way out through '21?
That's right. Remember, we still have, I'm sorry, we still have, in that short-term plan that I've showed you a couple of times, we still have a pre-K at the high school, pre-K offices at the high school, one of the two pre-Ks at Heath to move out, in addition to what we currently have now. So we, our goal is pre, as you know, is pre-K through eight schools. We're going to build two classrooms into that devotion project, right? But we're still going to be renting some equivalent amount of space in 2021. We have no plan through that time period to bring those back.
Okay. Yeah, I have one other question too, which I don't know which of you can answer this, but the, we're assuming we're getting an MSBA reimbursement on devotion of 24%, and yet you're, somewhere in here I read your assumption that we get 35% on the high school?
I was wondering if somebody asked that question.
Well...
Here's an answer for it. The 24% number is something that we've gotten back from the architects on devotion, because they've gone through... they've gone through all of the equations that MSBA requires. There's a cap on onsite improvements, there's a cap on soft costs, there's a cap on FFNE and a bunch of other things. And based upon the total cost estimate, they've calculated the effective reimbursement rate to be 24%. I got to thank and hope that a project at the high school wouldn't hit those caps like devotion has, and hopefully MSBA over the next few years increases their per-square-foot cap for hard construction. That's why that 24% number is so low. There's hopefully some pressure being placed on the MSBA to increase that per-square-foot price.
Okay. Just to be clear.
Optimism is a new side of Sean that we haven't seen before.
MSBA is currently reimbursing at about $100 per square foot less than the cost. I think the, I don't have the actual numbers in my head, but I know that what we have for the per-square-foot on devotion is about $100 higher than what MSBA reimbursement currently is.
Okay. I'd like to devote some time to the specific projects. I know we've got most of our department heads here ready to answer questions, so I can start. I'd like to talk a little bit about Center Street. Kara, maybe you're the best person to talk to. Good evening. So I noticed that there's actually two Center Street CIP items. One is the study and one is the rehab. So first question is, do we really want to start rehabbing if the study might come up with a whole new, a whole new plan, or am I misreading that?
I believe the rehab was already, I'm looking at Peter Diddo.
The whole thing.
There was patchwork that was done like last year, the year before of the actual driveway piece. The rest of it has been bumped out further while we do the study and see what needs to be done. So the rehab that's been pushed out to further years under DPW, that plan would be to take up the curbing and put the curbing right back down where it is.
Okay. So tell us a little bit about the study and what we envision. I didn't see in there what I thought I was going to see. I thought I was going to see the possibility that we were going to talk about air rights and a real development there, and it seems like the study that's envisioned stops short of that.
Yes. Unlike other studies that have been done for Center Street over the decades, from what I understand, this is not about bringing more private tax base to the town. That's not the focus of the study. It could end up there, but that's not where the study kind of impetus started. So backing up, this Center Street parking lot was kind of cobbled together by town engineering back in the '60s. There's a lot of private properties that were formed, you know, kind of put together to make the parking lot, including behind the theater. And Peter Diddo did a lot of research, and we did a lot of research during the town meeting discussions of when town meeting allowed the theater to lease air rights over the parking lot. That's when we really started looking at all these property lines and what's public and what's private. There used to be a grocery store back there that's no longer there. So that's why the shape of the Center Street lot is the way it is. Since then, nothing's been done, other than, you know, very minor maintenance, but there has been no overall rehab overhaul of that whole space. As the theater was looking to expand, and as we were talking at town meeting about air rights, we spent a lot of time looking at how is, you know, how is the curb behind the theater going to change? What could the space be once the theater is completed? And we looked at the theater alleyway, the one that is between the theater and CVS, and that sidewalk is a straight shot from Harvard Street to Seven Subs. And Seven Subs is a nice little restaurant that you can't sit down inside. Seven Subs is the only place in Coolidge Corner where you can eat outside. And so that got us thinking. And in between those two spots, between those two points, there's a couple of trees. There's also cars that are parking, from what we can tell, on public sidewalk, as if it's a private lot, the building behind Seven Subs. So that got us thinking even more. So what we did January of last year, we did a very conceptual study, it was a $5,000, you know, very conceptual study, that David Lee, Stolen Lee Architects did, and they said, well, you know, here's some other things that this parking, if this parking lot's going to be redone, because we saw this money to rehab this major parking lot coming down, if it's going to be redone, here's some thoughts. One thought is you could take, if you think that theater alley sidewalk, you could basically expand it just a little bit, so that there's maybe two rows of trees in the sidewalk and no cars parking there. Maybe the loading space that we're going to move could be fitted in a better way. That would be a bare minimum. That would be great. I would consider that a success. They also said, you know, if that area is about the same size conceptually as where the farmer's market is on Center Street West, if we bring that space over, if you think about that as a permanent open plaza, then in addition to every Thursday not having all of the commercial cars parking out in the residential neighborhoods, because those cars will no longer be displaced, but also there could be more events throughout the year. And that's something we heard in our Coolidge Corner. Market research, we had a professional survey done, people that are still willing to shop in real stores and not online are coming because of events, because of temporary things that are coming and going, they want the opportunity to socialize. So we started thinking about this outdoor living room, and if we did that, we would need to replace some of the parking spaces we would be taking up. In order to do that, we're talking about maybe building a parking deck, so like one level parking deck. If you're going to bother to do the infrastructure to do that, then what that does is a couple of things. At the same time, Laura Curtis and the Climate Action, Sleutmans Climate Action Committee has been studying different parcels throughout town for doing solar, community solar, which are solar panels that people can have the option to buy into for cheaper electricity. If you have a condo that you can't maybe put solar on your own condo, you can buy into this kind of network grid. So on top of the deck, you could put the community solar, it's big enough. And at the same time, depending on how the study goes, there's a possibility that some of the on-street parking on Harvard Street could be accommodated within that deck, and that would free up sidewalk, bicycle lane, more trees, you know, a little bit wider, a little bit of breathing room on Harvard Street. That's kind of the big, big, big picture. We know we're not going to do anything without a Sleutmans committee, so I plan on coming back to you with that. And I'd like to get that started before July, so that, you know, if the funding comes through starting July 1, I'd like for the committee, we have so many experts, in-house experts in town as volunteers, get them, you know, use that expertise before we hire a consultant to get as much conceptual work as we can get done.
Great. Great introduction to that topic. Now, but before you sit down, anybody else have anything that Kara might be the best person to answer? So try to get one department head up at a time to answer as many questions as possible. Gateway use questions maybe, or? No, I think we're pretty good on that. Thank you, Kara.
Thank you.
I have a question on the public safety dispatch computer-aided system. So I don't know if that's Mr. Stokes or?
It's a joint dispatch system.
Yeah, okay. So Chief, we have a pretty highly qualified technology committee, I forget their exact name.
IT.
IT Department?
IT.
No, it's a committee of citizens. Information Technology Advisory. And, you know, I was wondering, instead of spending $75,000 to hire an expert to tell you about the system, why not use our committee who works for free and put the $75,000 toward the actual system, which you're going to, I mean, my guess is a 10-year-old system is going to need to be replaced.
Right, but we're looking, we're looking for specific expertise in this field. We have a computer-aided dispatch now. As an example, the fire side uses Firehouse software, the police side uses Laramore software. This is computer-aided dispatching software, and it does a lot of other functions, at least our Firehouse does. We are looking to, as an example, I'll give you, we were looking to use iPads on inspections. Hopefully we're able to input information right while my companies do inspections, they do about 800 a year, have it go right into the system. Can't use iPads with Firehouse software. So it's things like that. The system's 10 years old, we've already had to upgrade it. So we want to look at having an expert in the field that's well-versed in public safety, in police dispatching, in fire dispatching, to be able to come in and maybe he says, you have the best already, you just go with the upgrades. Or maybe he says that your system is really antiquated and the new system that's better, GPS functional capabilities, things of that nature, GPS dispatching, which would dispatch closest apparatus, not necessarily a predetermined apparatus. So we're looking for an expert that can come in and evaluate what we have, what's out there, what our future needs will be.
Okay.
Okay. The questions for the chief?
I have a couple others for the chief on other subjects. So as I was looking through the CIP, I was, I didn't find a couple things I had thought might be in here. And one is you and I had spoken earlier in the year, or actually last year now, about some washing machines to remove toxic material from fire apparatus, and you had said you were weighing, wanting to do the capital project of getting these machines versus an operating expense system where you would send them to somebody to be cleaned of toxic substances or something like that. So I noted that I didn't see them in here, and I just wanted to hear what happened with that and?
Well, that, which we had briefly discussed.
Right.
I haven't had much more of a discussion on that. I did speak with union leadership, as I know part of it was their thought on the washers. And actually, I got the price quote today, about three hours ago.
Okay.
So a little late for our project of this year, but also that might not quite fall under the realm of a capital project, more in my capital operating, my normal operating budget, but not in the CIP program.
Okay. And the second one was that we had, a few years ago, I think we had some money in the CIP for some fitness equipment at some of the stations, because, and my interest in this is that, you know, I know there tends to be a lot of back and knee issues with, due to the heavy equipment that your firefighters have to carry into buildings, and which results in expenses for the town in terms of, you know, injuries and timeout and that sort of thing, as well as overtime issues for you. So I think that, you know, from my point of view, that the preventive, you know, being fit is a good way to try to keep those injuries down. And I know you've had some firefighters who actually are serving as peer trainers a little bit for some of the other firefighters, and I had heard from them that they would like a little more equipment than we were able to give them a few years ago, because some of the pieces were not working very, there's some older stuff that's not working too well, and they would like a sort of standardized set of fitness equipment at the different stations, so each week they could say, okay, here's the routine for this week, and anybody at any station could use it, because there would be similar pieces of equipment. So I'm wondering if that should be in here.
Well, you were instrumental in getting that initial influx of funding. We were able to send some firefighters off to, the IAFF puts on a program for peer fitness trainer, and they did do that. They have come back, they work a lot with our recruits. They've also initiated the help of other firefighters that we have that have some similar training, and they've brought them up to speed on the IAFF program. And they work with our recruits two or three days a week whenever we have a recruit program. They did come up with a suggestion, we use some of that initial funding for that training, we use some of it for equipment in the station. Is it a project that needs to move forward? And continually, yes. It really hasn't been addressed since that time. As far as new ideas and new equipment, those ideas really should come funneled through myself first, so I have an idea and can sit down with them and discuss where we're going, and then try to find a way to fit it into a long-term program and budget. Certainly all in favor of bringing in more equipment, more training, as you said, to try and lessen injuries, lessen the severity of injuries, quicken the healing time to get them back to work. All those are positive things, just mentally positive of not being out of work, but also cost-effective for the town. So it is something we should look at long-term and have a plan of not just that initial money influx and then not continuing forward. It's something that we really need to sit down and discuss.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add to that too? Because that was not funded in the CIP.
Oh, it wasn't? Okay.
And I don't see this kind of equipment as rising to a level of a capital improvement plan, but we do have a capital portion within the operating budget.
Right.
And as I mentioned to you, we'll certainly look at that.
Just like we, in that portion of that budget, we have a hose replacement program that goes on each year. We should probably look at funding something in there each year so we can improve.
Okay.
Chief, what's the next major piece of apparatus that hasn't been ordered yet that's in the CIP for replacement?
I think next year, we don't have any, we just ordered two, as you're aware, for this year. Next year, we have rehabs on apparatus, and I think the next big purchase is Tower 1, which would be in fiscal '18.
Okay, so we're just talking about rehabs between now and '18, right?
Correct. Tower 1 in '18, Engine 6 in '19. I think '17 is a pretty clean year. So next year, we have two overhauls in '16. We really don't have any big expenses on the apparatus. And then back on '18, we do.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for the chief?
Not for the chief.
No? Who wants to call? Thank you, Chief. I think that concludes your duties for this evening.
Transportation.
Yeah, I've got streets next myself, but.
So ask your question then.
I think Mr. Diddo is probably my person best able to answer my questions. Good evening, Peter. First, will you just tell us what's on tap for fiscal '16 for street rehabs?
Yes. We are putting this list together as we speak for the FY '16 streets. I will have that before this program's finalized, so at your next meeting, or even before the next meeting, I'll have the list available.
Is there any we know about already, like are certain certainties?
Yeah, I'm looking at some of the streets up in Addington Hill area. We did do some preventive maintenance up there last year.
At last.
I'm looking to continue.
Can I say that on behalf of my neighborhood? Yes.
I'm going to continue that program in that location.
Okay. The Dean Road and Chestnut Hill House signal improvement, what's wrong with that signal? Why does it need to be improved?
That controller that operates that signal is one of the old electro-mechanical ones. They're actually a time clock with the little pegs in it, and I don't even think they make parts to repair them. So that's the main thrust in there is to replace that controller and then upgrade the traffic signals in the post and arms.
Excellent.
Say your question, Chief.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that, but I was going to use that as a jumping-off point for a more general point.
Go first.
With the chair's forbearance. One of the things that drives me crazy in this town, and I'll announce that it's going to be a little pet project of mine, that we don't do a very good job of coordinating our signals, and I suspect a lot of it is due to lack of interconnection between some of our signals. So this is slated for upgrade, not this year, but next year. Will, as part of that process, consideration be given to building in the ability to interconnect that signal with surrounding signals, and so we can better coordinate our traffic and save stops and save gas and all that good stuff?
Right. What we'll look at is, there is a definite length limit that, you know, we don't want to go beyond. It doesn't make sense to go beyond to try to coordinate them, because they're just too far apart. That being said, with the up, with the development down at the Cleveland Circle Cinema, that may be an ideal time to put conduit in, at least get it in the street and. may be an ideal time to put conduit in it, at least get it in the street and over the bridge, that it might make sense to coordinate the Dean Street intersection with that. Heading the other way towards Route 9, that's too far, so try to interconnect.
Yeah, one of the intersections that drives me crazy is right here, Cypress, Davis, and Tappan. There have been many times where I'll get stuck on Cypress at Davis, and then all of a sudden, I'll go, you know, 100 feet and get stuck again at Tappan. And it's clear to me that those very close-together lights aren't coordinated, or if they are, they're not coordinated very well sometimes. So, you know, I'd like to just make sure we avoid situations like that, if we can.
All right. I don't know, Peter, if it's you or Todd who's best to update us on signal prioritization.
Todd's the expert on that.
All right, Todd.
Well, you have the same questions, I have.
But maybe, Peter, before you leave, and you've heard this from me before, but I might as well say it, because I still think it's really important. As part of Gateway East, is there a plan to improve the traffic signal coordination around the intersection of High Street, Route 9, and then another very short distance between that signal and the one at Station Street? And then again, a very short distance between those signals and where Harvard and Washington split? My point being that there are huge backups created by the lack of coordination there, or whatever it would take to make sure that cars are not trapped, as they frequently are, unable to move in order to get across Route 9, because just there isn't enough distance left.
Yes. To answer your question, yes, the coordination will go over the bridge and up into the...
Up into Brookline Village?
Brookline Village.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Peter before we move on? Okay. Todd. This kind of fell off my radar screen, signal prioritization. I can't remember when town meeting acted on it.
It's a town meeting.
It was just last spring?
It came up twice. Two town meetings ago was the non-binding resolution, asking for DPW to include it in the CIP. And this past May, it was included in the CIP, $50,000 for a contract to study the implementation of transit signal prioritization on Beacon Street and the Sea Line, to see if it made sense, the amount of time that would be saved, and identify those locations where it can happen, when it can occur, based on the location of the stops relative to the traffic signals, and then the cost to implement the system.
Okay. So when this all came up, there was a lot of gnashing of teeth about it, because a lot of people felt that the MBTA should be paying for this. Anything new in this universe? I mean, is there any indication that even though we've budgeted this, or budgeting it now, that maybe the MBTA is ready to start taking responsibility for this?
We're working with the MBTA. We have, we've been talking to a consultant to bring them on board. They've given us, we've given them a tentative scope, and the price is actually exceeding the $50,000. So we've been talking to the MBTA to at least pick up the additional, since this is one of their priorities, is to start rolling out, or at least studying the feasibility of a TSP signal, and Brookline is the best place to study it as possible. We'd like to work with them and grab that money before Boston does.
Yeah.
So we've asked them to at least pick up the difference between the scope and the $50,000, and if possible, fund even more of it, for at least the study phase.
I understand they already picked up the tab at Commonwealth, they have on the B-line, right?
Nope, they haven't. The B-line has not implemented it. They are just now finishing the installation of all the communication software. It's included in the design for the Commonwealth Phase Two project, which has actually been put on hold due to bicycle and pedestrian planning issues. So it's been on hold. But the T wants to see these move forward, and we're hoping to leverage that and get them to...
I'm still the feeling that this is something that we should get from the T for all their talk on the issue, and all their assessments that they get from us.
I agree, and we're going to keep pushing on the T's, you know, we can get as much as possible from them.
Yep. Unfortunately, they're a monopoly. Selectman Daley.
I'm ready to move on to the next subject.
Anything else for Todd? Good, thank you.
I have a couple of questions for Commissioner Papasturge.
Go for it.
As do I.
Commissioner Papasturge.
Commissioner Papasturge.
His turn to be grilled.
So I may have missed it, but was there any money in the CIP for the trash toters?
No.
To switch to the pay-as-you-threw, modified pay-as-you-threws?
No, that's not a CIP item.
Okay, okay. And I also wanted to ask, I know there is money in for the Carlton Street footbridge, and I remember being assured over many years by many people who were interested in it, that they would get grant money and so forth. So what has happened with that effort to get grant money, or state funding, or something like that for that project?
The Carlton Street footbridge project is progressing. We had moved off the 25% design after taking a long period of public comment. We are moving now towards 75% design for the bridge. The project has finally gotten a place in the tip, the state tip, so we're encouraged by that. See, it's very difficult to get an earmark in the tip unless you reach a certain point in the design process. So they were reluctant to do that at 25%, but they since then have done that. So the funds are in the tip. We are moving, we'll be moving towards 100% design. And of course, you will remember that the conditions for construction say that once the Muddy River Phase One project is complete, and within 30 days of the award of the contract for Phase Two, we have to have awarded a contract for the construction of the bridge. So that's our ultimate goal, that's our eye on the prize.
And what would, what's the tip funding likely to be, what percentage of?
Oh, I forget what the total was, but it was pretty near all of it, if I remember.
Oh, really?
Okay.
Wow. 100%.
Wow.
There you go. You got something for Annie?
I wanted to ask about the municipal service center renovation, the project that seems to keep coming back. I read in the description that we need an additional $650,000, and I'm wondering if you can just fill in the details for me a little bit.
Yeah, let me give you a little bit of the background on the municipal service center. I promised you after this that you're not going to see the municipal service center in the CIP again, not, at least not in my tenure. But the original appropriation was for $2.5 million to address the root cause of the floor issue, which was the underlying problem. We have a structural problem with the floor there, and the floor has continued to crack since it was built. It's primarily due to the loading. The upper level of the municipal service center is half ground slab, half structural slab, and unfortunately, all the heavy loading was put on the structural slab and not on the ground slab, which of course can take a higher loading. The shops for the traffic control department, the carpenter shop and storage areas were built on the ground slab, which of course is not the appropriate use. So with all the heavy truck traffic driving over the structural slab, the building was in effect moving and vibrating, which was causing the slab to plop and to fall. So in order to correct the problem permanently, we do have funds that are appropriated to repair the floor, but prior to repairing the floor, hopefully for the last time, we want to address the root problem, the root cause of the problem, which requires us to do a redesign and a renovation of the building to shift the spaces around the operational spaces, so that the heavy loading then gets on the ground slab, and the shops, which require a lighter loading, are reconstructed onto the structural slab. That's what the $2.5 million is set to cover. In order to do that, unfortunately, we have to move our wash bay out of that upper level, and because there is no place to put it on the lower level, in within the existing structure, we have to build a separate structure to house the truck wash bay down below on the lower level. And the last piece of that is the construction of a canopy and a fire suppression system over our fueling station, which at this time does not exist. So all of that together was all encompassed within the $2.5 million. Unfortunately, construction costs have gone up since this project began in design, and at this point, the current construction estimates are about $650,000 over the $2.5 million. So we're confident that, number one, when construction bids are received sometime this spring, that the costs will come down. I'm hoping that they will, and we'll be able to turn back some of those funds, but erring on the side of caution, we felt it prudent to put the additional request in the CIP.
Anything further?
I was going to ask about the real landfill closure as well, and see if there was a plan for how we're going to use that space.
Yeah, Peter will come up on the other one.
As you may recall, there's two landfills. There's a front landfill and a rear landfill. We successfully completed capping and closing the front landfill. DEP granted us five years' extension on closing the rear landfill, in order that the residents in that neighborhood who want to put an addition on a tear, a home down, would have a place to take their contaminated soil. That time line is finished, and we're ready to move forward with plans and specs to cap the rear landfill. So that money in the CIP is for construction of the cap for the rear landfill, as well as installing DPW operations, you know, sheds and work areas.
Okay, anything else for Mr. Ditto? Where else? Ms. Gallantine. I want to ask about Brookline Reservoir Park and what's needed there. I'm not, I go there all the time, it looks perfect to me.
Thank you very much. Brookline Reservoir, there are a few things that we need to do with Brookline Reservoir Park. The major component of that is actually draining down the reservoir and repointing the entire interior base of the reservoir. It has been many decades since that was done. It is a critical component of keeping the reservoir watertight, and it is, it also functions as a dam. So, you know, the majority of the funding is actually going to repoint in the interior, the entire basin. We'll also be refurbishing the perimeter stone dust track and making accessibility improvements into the reservoir.
Well, that answers my question. And that answers why I don't see the problem, because I don't go all under water. I don't go deep sea diving there. Although I have swam there in the past. Don't tell anyone.
Better than that.
Selectman Franco.
Synthetic tack, track replacement, synthetic turf replacement, excuse me, at Harry Downs Field. My recollection is that that was financed previously through a gift, and I see the full cost in the CIP. I'm wondering if we've foreclosed the opportunity, or the ability to get a gift from somebody in the future to help finance that?
We certainly have not foreclosed the opportunity of a possible gift or grant, but generally, the synthetic turf fields are warranty for eight years, and we will be going on upwards of 12. And already, we're seeing, you know, we have to do some repairs, there are tears and whatnot. And so when we installed the field, we did so knowing that ultimately, this would be the long-term obligation of the town. Hence, money is in the CIP, but we are certainly more than happy to work with potential donors that might care to work with us.
And has there been a determination that synthetic turf is the way to go in the future? Have we been happy with the performance and want to keep going down this avenue, as opposed to returning to grass?
We've been incredibly happy with the performance of the synthetic turf fields that we have. We have synthetic turf at Skyline, we have it now at Sewell, we also have it at Downs, a little area outside here at Pierce for the play area. So for those applications, it's been incredibly successful and has allowed much greater access for play during and following wet weather. I think the Park and Recreation Commission feels that they want to approach it, and with some caution and sensitivity, there are certain, certainly other active recreational fields where they feel it would be a good application, but they certainly don't feel carte blanche that it is appropriate for every park and every space that we have.
Thank you. Anything further for Aaron?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question for Ms. Palardis about the...
I do, too. Ms. Palardis, please, you're welcome.
Yeah, mine is about the swimming pool at Tappan Street in the locker room. You know, I've been around too long when I start saying, "What, we just did those locker rooms?"
Right. Actually, I believe the locker rooms were done in part, a portion of them were done. I believe it was now 11 years or so ago, so none of the tile was touched at that time. So none of the tile was touched at that time. We've done some repairs, some true Band-Aid kinds of things in both the men and women's locker rooms, but this is addressing the full need for both.
And the $400,000 is for repointing the concrete?
Yeah, yeah. This is similar to the Brookline Reservoir. So we would be repointing, like the reservoir, the concrete structure beneath the swimming pool. So in order to get the most longevity out of it as possible.
My question is on the golf course. So we've got a couple million dollars' worth of enterprise-funded capital improvements at the golf course. Can you give us a snapshot of the balance sheet at the golf course, and assure us that they are producing the revenues to carry this additional capital improvement cost?
Yeah, actually, we've had a great couple of years, the last three years, actually. And last year, we exceeded our revenue projections by about 90, I want to say, between $70,000 and $90,000. I'll have to look at that number. In this year, we project the same. That includes all the debt service that we pay. We factor that in, a specific amount of debt service as an expense every year. So that does factor that in. So we feel very confident, moving forward, that this is the plan that's sustaining the golf course, and not actually enabling us to keep it a thriving place as well.
Good. That's what I wanted to hear. Anything else? All right, I'm out of questions. Anybody else have any? Thank you all for your very helpful input on this. And if we didn't get to you, if you're department head and you didn't get asked a question...
You got lucky.
Yeah. It's always next year, but probably because your presentation and the materials were so good. Let's move on now to our next agenda item, which is continuing, but nearing an end discussion of the override study committee report. If you remember from our... Let me turn my agenda. Sorry. Give me one second, please. Did it snuck into here? There we go. So if you remember from our last meeting, we talked about putting four different items on our discussion for tonight. First is a superintendent to present a review of budgetary, a further review of budgetary impacts, and a revised plan for different budget scenarios. We're also going to talk after that about ability to pay issues, then non-property tax revenues and reductions, and then we're also going to talk briefly about sidewalk snow removal, so, or maybe not briefly. So Superintendent Lupini, Mr. Rowe's going to present to us. Very good.
Yeah, can I just say while he's getting set up, that you have an updated version of something I passed out last week, which were my notes to try to figure out all of the... the, and I think Mel has worked on this a little bit to fill in some things, and I added a little debt exclusion information on there. But it's, I was trying to get clear in my mind some of the choices we have to make. So, that's what those notes are. And I know Neil is, I don't think we have it in here, but Neil was working on taking my notes and putting them into a kind of spreadsheet kind of thing or something where you could move around and adjust.
Good. Thank you.
Stuff.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you all. I wanted to begin by just giving you, if you will, a mechanism for reading the roadmap, which is this big spreadsheet which you received.
Polychrome.
Excuse me?
Polychrome.
Polychrome, that's right. And we've actually modified this slightly from what we gave you in terms of color. You'll notice that the column over here that shows the current year FY15, we've actually put into three different shades of orange. And the reason for that is because obviously we can't read the detail on this slide. So, in the next three slides, we've broken this into the three sections that you'll notice are color-coded by these three groups. So, when I go to the next page, you'll notice that what we have is the top section here. And our goal here is to, was to answer the question that we had, as we'd been discussing the various initiatives that were part of the school department needs that we defined, really driven by enrollment growth that's been affecting us over the last few years, and began to discuss this well over a year ago now with the override study committee. We at first put together a package, which is essentially what you'll find in the green column, which we call here our 100% package. And then, as we get farther into the discussion, as you recall, as we looked at what the override study committee came out with recommendations, and they were what were called a Group One and Group Two recommendations, we talked about packages that resembled, that made up 90% and 65% of our original package. So, that if you go to actually near the middle of the third column, what you'll see is the totals for what were our original packages. And I just want to take a minute to read this so that I can frame this for you, which is that if you look here on the 100% package, what was defined as our original package was in the 12 million-plus range, about 12 and a half million. As we began to build a package for the 90% plan, we reduced that by about a million six to this package here, which totals 10.6? 10.9? And then finally, we had to reduce that up three-plus million again to get down to 65%. So, when we look at what we show here as the subtotal of that original grouping that was what we defined as the need to catch up with where we had fallen behind over the years, these are the three totals that resemble the original package we put together, adjusted for this year's enrollment, and then a modified 90% package, and then a remodified 65% package. And the purpose of this line here was to show how each of these areas that we list programmatically, go back to the previous one, so you see the various categories, how they compare with the base budget in FY15. So, each category has a current budget in staffing, and then this is how much we would add or subtract, but add in most cases over three years, varying on the base. So, that this year's budget is the, again, sorry for not being able to see, $91 million worth of initiatives. But then, what's important, I think, and what often had been missed as folks were thinking about the package, was one of the other things that affect school department spending is we put a budget together. And that's why we added categories that are called the special education, step increases, and collective bargaining, which is a large number of $2.1 million. Step increases over three years, I'm sorry, is the $2.1 million. The next category is collective bargaining at 2%, which is another 4.5 million in each of the scenarios and would affect us if we settle on collective bargaining increases for 2% in each of the three years. So, this is growth that affects each of the years. A contingency set at 225,000 each year, so that's why there's a $675,000 number for that. The cost of opening the Old Lincoln School, which is a $679,000 expected cost, and it was in each of the packages that way. Then there's an entry for what we call rental contingency. The reason it varies in each of the three scenarios is because when we originally did our 90 and our 65, we set aside money for that because we hadn't gotten to the final number as we've worked with the town administration. So, we never modified our original packages. In fact, what you could do in each of these packages here is go into that number, the 200 or the 750, and either reallocate it back to program or take it out of the bottom line in terms of the gap that you'll see here over the three-year period.
Excuse me. I just want to clarify because I've asked about this number in the CIP and I want to be sure I'm matching properly.
Sure.
Is this 750, the same 750 we looked at in the CIP that's called classroom capacity?
Exactly.
Which could be rentals, but could, well, is rentals, but could be reallocated depending on what space is being rented for which grade groups, whatever.
Yes. It's that 750, and because we put together our 65% model about two months ago, we have not reached the point of agreement, working with the town administration, that we would move those costs to the CIP going forward.
Ah, okay. So, in fact, this could simply be deleted.
Yeah, that's right. As I said, in fact, the 65% model that we built at that point in time allowed for 750 for these operating costs. Because if we were to put a 65% now, we would adjust the package by that 750.
All right. But we are now budgeting for that in the CIP. That's really me needing to get those two things tied. Thank you.
Sure. No problem. Thanks. And then, and so the last, so that shows that the total budget changed. So, then what's important is to think about the revenue. The key points are that, the second key point, after we look at the modeling we did for cost increases over three years, was the modeling that Sean has done in trying to get a handle on what he would expect revenue growth to be, that would flow to the school department over the next three years, based on certain assumptions that relate to health insurance cost changes, the state budget, where local revenues would be, Proposition Two and a Half without overrides, et cetera. And so, that number, we finally set on a number that's just over $9 million over that three-year period. And so, that's also what you see in here in each of these. So, what these do is they frame the gap, and the gap is the number that we're talking about in needing to close with a debt, with an operating override over the next three years. And at the 90% level, that's approximately an $11 million number, and at the 65%, that's approximately an $8 million number. So, that's sort of the broad strokes, if you will, how we wanted to present these numbers is to give you a sense of how to look at this plan. So, we're prepared to answer any questions or talk specifically about anything here.
So, let me say a couple of quick things. The first is that if you go on from, whoop, I shouldn't have done that, all right? Trying to get out of this. I want to go on to the next slide. And beyond there. Yeah. So, the rest of these slides, there's actually nothing new here. You saw these slides in November, November 10th, I believe it was. And I think this is what was the motivation, the fact that these next slides exist over about 20 or 30 pages-
Right.
-for creating the summary.
Yep.
Right? This has some additional detail in terms of the reasoning behind those choices, but now you have a summary and you have the detail. So, there's nothing new in the remainder of this information. The other comments I want to make first are that these don't represent budgets, right? So, we're about to start on a process, actually, we've been involved with our principals in looking at FY16. And while we're certainly working within these three-year models in constructing an FY16 budget and actually laying out the priorities for 17 and 18, there will be slight differences. These numbers were originally created, that 100% model was created a year and a half ago, right? And our enrollment patterns have changed since then, and so there will be differences in there. Listen, these different categories are called a number of different things. They're called catch-up, they're called enhancement, they're called enrollment growth. They're all enrollment growth. Every item on here is in some way associated with the growth in our enrollment. A great example is we called, what we've done with literacy specialists, we called it an enhancement of our program. It is. We're attempting to put something that's research-based into place because we believe that will help improve achievement for students. But the fact of the matter is that we're adding literacy specialists because we've grown by the number of students that we've grown by. So, they're all enrollment growth. The supply budgets, administration, they're all driven by the increased numbers of students that we've seen. And Peter made the comment about rental, so I won't belabor that, but the only other item I will address is, you know, in that scenario, when we presented in November, we talked about the 65%. And I know that some people, particularly people associated with the override study committee, looked at our choices in the 65% and said they didn't match their choices, right? They actually gave the school committee and the administration an idea of how they would, not only the amount of money they would allocate, but how they would spend those dollars. And I told you at the time that that's not how we would choose to spend those dollars, with all due respect to those people who put that model forward. We chose in looking at this, and we'll make adjustments to it if those are the numbers, we'll make adjustments to it, obviously, but we chose to focus, our areas of focus, we chose to focus on our vulnerable populations, right? And that meant we had to make some choices in terms of reducing some other areas in order to make sure that we could fund guidance counselors and special educators and regular education, literacy specialists, math specialists, those kinds of things. Those were choices we made that we will obviously have to revisit as we go through this budget process. So, I can certainly walk you through these again. I don't think you want me to do that, particularly at this time, right? But beyond that, we'd be happy to answer any questions on what we've put together. Can I just say one other thing about the previous presentation as well? I didn't get a chance to do this when I came up here. I want to thank Sean Cronin in particular, and Mel Kleckner as well, for the work with us on this year, what was a particularly difficult CIP. And particularly in Sean's case, I'll say the patience that he has exhibited with regard to the school department and our ever-changing needs and our conversations with our communities around what they wanted to see in terms of their schools and our attempting to meet those concerns while also honoring what was in the best interest of kids. And Sean in particular was always there, has always been there to support those efforts as we've changed our mind on a weekly basis. So, he did a great job presenting that, but he did a better job working with us to put together what was the major part of that CIP. So, thanks for letting me say that. And again, any questions you have on this, we'd be happy to try to answer.
Is there a way of thinking about this that we can understand? This is a three-year scenario. Finish this sentence. This is a three-year scenario, that we can understand how much in year one, how much in two, how much in three?
Yeah. So, we're starting on that. I mean, there are some original, you want to speak? Sure. You may recall and you may have seen various models that we worked out and shared in our presentations and discussions back originally with the override study committee, and we've done those with the school committee on a number of occasions. Let's take this one as an example. While the growth of 18 FTEs over, 22 FTEs over three years wouldn't be exactly smooth and, you know, essentially seven a year, it would be close to six in one year, eight in another year, six in another year. Because this one, for instance, is driven by the movement of enrollment growth up through the elementary schools. So, it's based on that assumption that every year we get 650 more kindergartners, and so that as we graduate fewer eighth graders, we need more staff to work with those kids in the school. So, this would be a relatively smooth movement. There's some others in here, for instance, I believe the literacy staff shows a growth of eight over the three-year period. Our teaching learning offices, working with the literacy staff and with principals to talk about what that means in terms of the literacy initiative that's going on. So, programmatically, that would be different. So, some of these are fairly smooth and some may be more front-end or back-end loaded. Really depends on the initiative, right?
Yes. And I think in the overall, the answer to your question is, as I recall those models, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 50% of the dollars, 30% of the dollars, 20% of the dollars. Sort of an overall model.
So, there was, so there is some front-loading?
There is front-loading because so, because much of it is staffing, guidance, nursing, et cetera, that we neglected for some number of years. So, is that, that's a rough model.
That's what I needed. Thank you. Second, Daley.
Yeah, I don't see it listed anywhere on here, but I assume you've accounted for your increase in the health insurance costs, et cetera, as you add staff members?
Yes. And you don't see it because that's in the, carry on, remember, in the town side budget? So, what happens is, the number here that's listed as revenue, the $9 million regular revenue increase, three-year projection, the second to the last bottom, the $9 million. When we work through the partnership formula, what happens is, first, money is set aside for benefit costs that are carried on the town side, and Sean has worked through a formula that assumes certain growth in our staffing each year and adjusts the percentages, you know, at least on the rough numbers that we believe we can. So, yes, benefits are picked up first, and then this is the net revenue that goes to our operating budget after that, in the same way that, for instance, capital costs through the CIP or if there were, for instance, effects from the building department. If a projection has heating costs going up in a three-year period because of the way that the building department carries, school department, building and repair costs and energy costs, those get factored into the partnership formula before we're given our net revenue number.
I'm just confused at why it's the same number in each scenario, but you're obviously adding far fewer staff.
Yes. Well, okay, so now let's stop. Because that's the net revenue to us, the, so that's a blended number over three years.
Okay.
It assumes, and most of the cost, I think, comes from the factor on how, for instance, a premium's going to grow year to year, as much it is from staff increases. So, the staff numbers, obviously, were growing less. We're getting the same projected, at least at this point, net revenue number out of the town, but that number could change. For instance, if in a lower scenario, I suppose we could find ourselves in year two in a better situation, if you will, for needing to fund benefits or in the third year than in this projection, but we won't really know those for sure until the dust settles.
Okay. All right. But you have accounted for it, which is a question.
So, I heard you say that there were some choices made in this document and that you've chosen to fund programs at a different level than perhaps one of the groups of the override study committee did. I spent some time over the weekend trying to compare the programmatic areas listed on the left side of this page to the original catch-up and enhancement requests that were made a year and a half ago, and didn't directly see a parallel between those requests and what I see on this piece of paper. Board-certified behavioral therapists, for example, wasn't a category I saw here. So, I'm wondering if there's been a change or a different thinking about not only what you want to fund in the future in addition to how specific programs are going to be funded or what level?
The answer is no. This ties out exactly with that original plan, but what we've done is given a little more fine-tuning. So, for instance, the categories, the first two categories, K-8 classroom teachers and VHS classroom teachers were part of the regular ed growth. There was a category that included, that we called regular ed supports. That was the guidance and psychologists, which you see here as the third item. And it included with it the- it the, where on the next page, ECS, which is, where's ECS? ECS at the bottom of the first page, and it included social worker, and there's a social worker, where am I now? Social worker in-
Student services?
Yeah, no.
No.
Guidance.
Social workers are 4.4.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the answer to your question basically is, we have the full reconciliation of each of these categories back to the original, and I could, I'll send you a copy of it, so you'll see. So for instance, we summarized, as I said, we summarized guidance, psychologist, social workers, and ECS.
You've collapsed categories.
Yeah, why a year and a half ago, we put them all together, I can't exactly tell. We've broken some of those after this, and, what was I going to say? And on, for instance, BCBA's are embedded, we didn't break them out, and this one is called student services. The student services has the BCBA number within it. Again, we could show you, we actually had a category called OT, PT, speech, and BCBA. So we actually carried for four, and the reason was because we drove them in the model by a formula, and the formula was actually the same for all four services. So we used it as a ratio of enrollment growth, first to define what we thought was the catch-up, and then to define how much we thought we'd need to grow each year going forward. So we have all that data, I can-
I'd be interested in seeing it.
Yeah, sure.
Selectman Wyszynski.
What is the, between the 90 percent scenario and the 65 percent scenario, what's the programmatic difference in the K-8 classroom teachers? Does it mean larger classes?
It was a reduction of one section a year.
Okay.
So it was, if you will, based on a premise that somewhere in the system, each year we would be able to redirect students somehow, or collapse a class at some grade at one school, to capture back a section, and the section was defined as 1.3 FTEs. So that's why it's 3.9 is the difference over the three-year.
I've read, and I don't know where I've read it, that at the 65 percent, the elementary music program is cut, is that?
No, it's actually not affected in this plan. As we, we had talked about issues related to that, and the deeper we got into the conversation, the more it really does appear that the schedule of the K-8 schools is so dependent on music for release that it's simply not a, it's not an issue that we dealt with.
Okay.
But to your point on the elementary classrooms, so if you look back through our last three or four budgets, you'll see that we, for the following year, assumed a consolidation, or in some cases, two. This is making those assumptions three years out, which is a little riskier. So in the 65, we've made that assumption, we didn't make that assumption in the 90.
Do you have a sense, if you were to take what is listed here as rental contingency and program the money, do you have a sense, or can you have a sense by the time we're making a decision, how you would recommend reprogramming it?
Yeah, second-grade paraprofessionals. Is that quick enough? No, I'm saying, and I'll tell you why. I mean, that's off the top of my head, that would be the first area we would look, how about that?
In all the scenarios?
It's not in the 90.
Right.
We programmed it out of the 90, and you've probably, all at one time or another, whether you remember it tonight or not, seen our special education analysis of various components of that program, and you know that we have held our numbers of paraprofessionals fairly steady despite a growing student body, and one of the major reasons for that is that we've programmed paraprofessionals into K and 1. It's a research-based model. The research-based model, however, says it's a K-1, 2 model. We never made it to second grade, we built it into the initial model of this. It would be the first area I think I would look, because of its ability, we know already, to save us dollars in other places, and to create better situations for kids, quite frankly.
Selectman Duit?
I'm trying to reconcile what I, I think I understand, but I can't make the numbers work. When you talk about classroom consolidation, you talk about a reduction of 1.3 FTEs.
That's correct.
So I'm assuming the 1 is the classroom teacher?
Yes.
And the 0.3, and this is my question?
Yes.
Is, does the 0.3 consist of some combination of, and here's where you can tell me it is or does or does not, guidance, student services, I'm assuming not administrative staff, literacy specialists, math specialists, paraprofessionals, professional learning innovation, is that part of it?
No.
Social worker, and all these different listed items?
It's actually on this slide, right here, Slide 6, and it's the next-to-last bullet. The 0.3 is about specials.
Okay.
The 0.3 is about art, music, and phys ed.
Art, music, and physical education.
That's right. And so for every section we program in, forget about numbers of kids, for every section we program in, we have to program in a 0.3 to take care of those specials that students have, and they have one each day.
All right, so again, I'm trying to understand if you consolidate and you eliminate a classroom?
Yes.
Would not some portion of those other named categories that I just was listing off be reduced as well?
They actually are, we reduced these by the 1.3. Can we reduce them by the 1.3?
I'm trying to figure out, who is the 0.3 here? If the 0.3 is all of the above-
The art, music, and phys ed.
It's only art, music, and phys ed.
We don't reduce the other categories, and here's why.
Okay, that's my question.
Yeah, it's a great question. These are section-dependent.
Okay.
Art, music, and phys ed are section-dependent.
Right.
Guidance counselors are more numbers of students in the building-dependent.
Okay, so if the number of students stays, but the number of sections is reduced, that level is not changed?
That's right.
Okay, that's the answer to my question.
Bill, when we took a preliminary look at this a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
We talked about central administration?
Yes.
And what the, you know, we're talking about people, be stationed here on the fifth floor?
Possibly.
And you thought, I seem to recall, you thought you were going to get some insulting information almost a day or two later than our conversation?
No, not that part. So there's two, there's two pieces we have coming from the Collins Center, who we're doing some work with. One is around technology and our staffing pattern, and one is around some specific recommendations about administration, particularly central administration, and we're expecting those middle to end of this month. And so as we present our budget, we'll be able to factor in the specifics of that. These are plug numbers for now.
Okay, I didn't know if there was new information since-
No, I don't, I'm expecting a briefing, let's see, they're going to meet with some school committee members next week, probably early the following week, I'll have some preliminary information. Happy to come share it with you whenever, as we build it into the budget for FY16.
Okay, thanks. We probably do need to move on to the other segments of our review.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Actually, before I let the schools go, one housekeeping item. So our public hearing, evening public hearing, we tentatively scheduled for the 22nd at 7:00 PM. I've heard back from some of our colleagues at the school committee that that's, they would like to be present, at least present for that and part of that, and it interferes with-
We meet that evening.
Susan, why don't you, maybe Susan will come forward. See if we can work out a reschedule on that that works for everybody.
So I don't have numbers, I just have the schedule.
Yeah, so what are you guys doing on the 22nd?
We're doing some pieces of, Susan Wolftekov, Chairman of the School Committee, thank you for having me. We're doing some pieces that I think are relevant to the budget. One set of things is our no override budget scenario. One piece has to do with short-term space plans. One piece has to do with elementary world language, and all three of those seem to be relevant here. And I think the other piece that I heard from school committee colleagues this morning, pretty resoundingly from the eight who were at our finance committee meeting, was that they really wanted to hear from the public, and they wanted to be here and hear what people had to say. So anyway, I think there are different ways we can potentially-
What time is your meeting schedule?
So typically, we go from 6:00 to 8:30. I mean, if we moved that earlier, if we went from 5:00 to 7:30, we could do that. If you guys started at 7:30, we could also, I don't know what you guys are doing Tuesday and Thursday, I don't know if you're meeting both nights, or what you're doing.
Well, Tuesday's a regular meeting, and we don't want to-
You don't want to move that?
We don't want to do the hearing during the meeting, we want to make sure there's plenty of time for it.
I think Tues, the reason we came to Thursday, we wanted a short week, so we can't do Monday, and this room was being used on Wednesday, there was a ZBA, I think, on Wed, there was something going on that Wednesday.
I couldn't remember what it was, and then somebody thought maybe Ben was busy that night, too.
It was the morning that I requested that we not do.
But if we could do 7:30?
I think the 7:30 solution sounds fine to me. We just go a half hour later and, okay? Does that work?
It'll be a good forcing function for us to end on time.
Not too late for us to change that hearing right now.
Okay, so what have we changed?
We're just changing from, originally, we're going to start at 7 o'clock on the 22nd, we're going to start at 7:30 instead.
Okay.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Next, we're going to take up non-property tax revenue and reductions, Mr. Kleckner.
Yes, I'm going to move to the podium for this, please.
I do first want to say, I also wanted to respond to Bill's, Bill Lupini's comments about my staff, and particularly Sean. The CIP this year was an extremely difficult process. It's ongoing, but just to develop that and to do the kind of changes that needed to be done, I do want to acknowledge Sean's effort. I heard, I heard tonight two things, that he was optimistic and patient. I wouldn't necessarily agree with those two things, but seriously, this year has been really difficult, and I do want to acknowledge his effort, and which will be ongoing, of course. I also put together a spreadsheet, and I worked from a lot of the material that Selectman Daley put together, which she has also updated this evening and put in, it's more of in a narrative form, but I tried to capture everything on one page, it's a busy page, and so what I've done is, I do have a PowerPoint that I'd like to just run through to go through everything that's on this page, so that's what I intend to do. The first thing I would like to say is, I just want to clarify, maybe not clarify, but emphasize a couple of things that we're talking about, and I've heard the three-year plan being discussed a number of times. And, but the first one is about the reductions, the municipal reductions. As you know, the override study committee had, has identified almost $3 million, 2.9 million in additional non-property tax revenue and municipal budget reductions or efficiencies in order to reduce the impact on the taxpayers, and that would happen in all scenarios. So I was getting, I think, confused, and folks were asking me questions about the municipal reductions here in relation to the municipal reductions that we've talked about if the override doesn't pass. They're two different things. This is, in all cases, trying to reduce the reliance on the override in every single scenario, so I just want to be clear about that. The other thing I did want to mention is about the three-year plan. The override study committee plan reflects this three-year funding model approach, and we talked a little bit about, I heard questions about, how is this going to phase out? And it is going to be front-loaded, and we expect that the full override would take place in year one, and that these other efficiencies, excuse me, the other revenue and the budget efficiencies would take place in year two or three of the plan. And so knowing that, and knowing that all budgets are based on assumptions, you know, it's very difficult to project year two and three out, and I just want you to keep that in mind as we talk about some of these ideas. We do put numbers associated with them, but, you know, if they're going to happen two or three years from now, there's a lot that can change. I just wanted to disclose that issue.
Just so I'm clear on it, then, what you're saying is you'd anticipate that the full, let's say it was a $12 million override, operating override, the full amount would be in year one, it wouldn't be, that wouldn't be broken up over three years?
Well, I guess it depends a little bit about-
30 percent, 20 percent?
About the amount, but I'm anticipating that all, if not all, would be raised in the first year.
Okay. I mean, isn't it going to result in a surplus?
I doubt it. Okay, so looking back at the summary of the override study committee recommendations, they had projected, they had recommended 2.3 million in non-tax revenue and $563 in reductions from the current municipal budget, for a total of 2.8 million 790, 79,000. That is based on, as I said, non-property tax revenue, about 2.3 million. So let me go through those with you. Parking meter rates at 850,000, which represented an increase from the dollar per hour rate to a dollar and a quarter an hour. The refuse fee, which would essentially increase that fee to generate more cost, up to 100 percent cost recovery. Library materials and fines, that's pretty self-explanatory. I believe the rate was from five cents a day to 25 cents a day for those, for books and DVD fines. Actually, I'm not sure what the current rate is, so the end rate would be 5 and 25, I don't know that offhand. Cemetery fees by 10 percent, resulting in 16,000, and the school childcare rates, 273,000 to get to a so-called market rate. On the school side, we're talking about mostly rental, all of this is rental of facilities for the extended-day program. I believe up to the point where the override study committee is looking at this, there was, there was an agreement. The BEEP rental to get to market rate, Baldwin to initiate a rental agreement there, and then looking at how we can generate revenue for the evening and weekend use of our schools, primarily in the wintertime. So for a subtotal of 522,000, so there's the revenue estimate or projections from the override study committee. On the municipal expenditure side, there's, really, there were three. There was the library books and materials, 50,000, which I believe the override study committee had suggested is possible, that they could be replaced with enhanced trust fund revenue. The solid waste program, $440,000 reduction, and outsourcing grounds maintenance for up to 73,000 for 522,000. So I'd like to address each of these. On the parking meter revenue, we believe we can meet that, we believe we can meet that estimate, however, we would not propose increasing these rates without upgrading all meters in the commercial areas to digital units. The digital units create much more ease, we're talking about the single-spaced ones now, not the, what I would consider to be a failed experiment on the on-street multi-unit, multi-space units. And so if we are going to cover, we believe the capital cost can be covered in the CIP, but once you introduce digital units, you are then introducing credit card, that's the whole point, to make these easier for people to use, potentially down the road, pay-by-cell or other technology, and there's a significant cost with that, primarily, you know, credit card fees, and also the communications that has to exist with these units. So that's going to be a cost, and in order to offset that cost, we believe that there are other increases in the parking area through commercial and temporary parking permit increases that can absorb that, that increased in the budget offsets, the operating budget offsets. So bottom line is, we believe we can meet the override study committee target of $850,000. Refuse fee, we believe we can meet that as well. However, I will say that we've been doing a lot of analysis on this modified pay-you-throw system, and- And as was mentioned today, when you were interviewing a candidate for the solid waste advisory committee, you began to talk about the size of the bins that would be allowed to, folks to put their trash in. We believe, at least for the first year, and maybe going forward, is people are, there are some people who will not be willing to fit everything or can't fit everything in their 30-gallon container. Is it 30-gallon container or 35-gallon container? And so there will be, they will have an opportunity to purchase a second or they will have an opportunity to purchase bags. We haven't figured out exactly this method, the overflow, what we call the overflow charges. We think that's going to generate a fair amount of money. We projected $230,000, excuse me, $220,000 a year. And so if we are assuming that, then hopefully we won't have to increase the refuse fee as much. So we're looking at potentially down the road, increasing the refuse fee to 230 as opposed to 250. But the bottom line is, the mix of revenue between the overflow charges and the increased fee would meet the override study committee target of $615,000.
On that point, just because I know it's come up in the past and I want to be sure that we at least acknowledge this. In the original override in the 1990s, the refuse fee was actually reduced in order to have the deductibility of the cost through the property tax. And so here we are, kind of doing the same thing again, saying we're going to increase the refuse fee, which is nondeductible, at a time when we're also asking people to increase their property taxes. And I'm only going to just, I'm just saying this because there was some considerable thought given to one override scenario, suggesting that adding to a fee in this particular way was, since it's the same population, the people who pay the refuse fee are also mostly the people who pay the property taxes.
I say the majority of them are, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard that discussion and I've had that discussion in other communities where it talked about how we can basically leverage federal resources because federal, when you deduct on your federal taxes, you pay less to the federal government and then they essentially would subsidize. So I'm assuming that the board might have that discussion again.
I thought there was also supposed to be a savings in our operating costs.
Yes, I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
Yep. That's just, I just have split up the revenue and expenditures. Okay, I'm going to keep moving on. Library fines, that of course is under the jurisdiction of the elected Board of Library trustees. And they have indicated they would support $20,000 in fine increases. So I haven't gone any further than that at this point, given the relative scope of this amount. So at this point, that does not meet the override study committee target by $20,000. Cemetery fees, we believe we can meet the override study committee target there. School recreation, there is a problem here, I believe. And that is that we are actually proposing to add 100% cost recovery over a period of time that would generate about $100,000 more than what we're currently. But it does not by any means reach the market rate. And you know, our recreation director and others we've talked about believe that would effectively eliminate this service. That could not be sustained. And I think if we're going to get into that more, I'd probably need the recreation director to be here and discuss that in more detail. But this is an area, this is a big area where we don't meet the override study committee target of $173,000.
I'm sorry, is $173 the shortfall or is $173? That's the shortfall.
Yes. But we are proposing a couple of things that although the override study committee didn't recommend them as direct, they did address them, I know, in their report. Actually, the override study committee report was very extensive in a lot of areas. But two that we like to bring up to the floor and hopefully offset some of those targets that we're not meeting is a pilot payment. I believe that with concerted effort of this board establishing a policy and providing leadership, that there is more pilot out there. And I think you know Steve does a good job, but he needs, I think, the whole town's leadership to be behind him and really make a push. And I think we can generate $50,000 additional in pilot revenue. I'm not even including the medical marijuana dispensary, which we're still talking about. I'm talking about other nonprofit institutions, tax exempt from property taxes. And so again, that's not going to happen in the first year, but I think over three years, we can reach that. And I'm also proposing, which I think we've talked a little bit about at this board, about an online transactional fee for motor vehicle excise tax payments for credit card, essentially. And we believe we can generate $45,000 there. We have a lot of credit card transactions in the town. Some of them, we incorporate the cost of that within the base rate. For example, in water sewer, we always take into consideration the credit card processing fees and incorporate them in the rate, not unlike a lot of businesses probably do it. Or we absorb the costs just for convenience or really to incentivize people to use credit cards in certain areas. But for motor vehicle excise, we would actually add a separate charge for a transaction fee, not unlike what we do with the property tax. And we believe we generate $45,000. I think you will, we will hear from some folks not happy about that, I'm sure, because that's not a typical thing that people experience when they transact business on credit cards.
I would disagree. In the realm of taxation, I think most governments will charge for credit card fees. You know, the IRS does, the state does, we do for property tax. I put this in the tax category as opposed to more retail-like kinds of transactions.
I don't disagree, Neil, and that's sort of why it's there. Okay. Now I'm going to go on to the expenditures. And here's one where I don't think, despite I think the good faith efforts, and I will give you some history. I've fought this battle a long time, for about 30 years. The library, public libraries in Massachusetts have a very effective law, which essentially says that a municipality, in order to be certified by the Board of Library, state Board of Library trustees or commissioners, must meet certain municipal appropriation standards. And that means, that doesn't mean you can reduce the budget and take it from trust fund revenue. It doesn't mean that you can reduce them if other budgets aren't going down in a similar fashion. So it's a very effective law for the public libraries. And I don't think it's going to be a winner, myself. So I'm not, I don't think that one's going to fly. I'll say more about that. Outsourcing grounds maintenance, we believe we can meet this target. We haven't done this analysis for some time. And frankly, I think we have become more efficient in our internal grounds maintenance. So that's going to, this is going to be a challenge. But with a period of time, we believe we can get to that. Or do something similar in that realm, related efficiencies. But I can't speak too much more than that. But we believe we can meet that target. And then the solid waste program, that's the one, Nancy, that you just mentioned. There's real savings there and it's a great efficiency. Not only are we saving money by converting to pay-to-throw, but we're also by the manner in which we're doing it, through automation, and also just taking advantage of the market. We just, as you know, you already approved solid waste disposal rates that are much lower than they were before. But all that taken into consideration, we feel very confident that we can reach that expenditure level. So I do want to summarize on this, well, you know, I was putting this together late in the day and so I want to make sure, I think I may have missed a pretty big section, which is, which you'll find on your spreadsheet, which is the school rentals. And that's an area where I think we're going to shortfall, very short, for a couple of reasons. Number one, many of those or a proportion of those have already begun and in fact were implemented and are being taken advantage of in the fiscal '15 budget. So those have been built into the school department's base. I think they partially helped when the enrollment numbers went higher than what were anticipated. And the other part is that the school committee does not believe that getting to market or getting as far as the override study committee has identified is good public policy. And certainly they can speak for themselves. But there is going to be a shortfall, primarily that $532,000 shortfall is a lot of that, is in that area. So between the expenditure target and the staff analysis, we think there's going to be an overall shortfall from the $3 million that the override study committee has identified, about $582,000 shortfall. So with that, I want to tell you that, you know, there's really, I see three options to deal with that. Again, they're over a three-year period, but still, we would have to increase the tax override in order to make that up. We could identify alternative revenues or expenditures or we can assume some rest, that some of the many assumptions that make up our budget, especially if you're looking two or three years down the road, you know, maybe we're too conservative and we can get lucky. Now normally, that's how we extend our overrides beyond three years, to four years, five years. So when you do that, that is risky, that, you know, the override won't last as long. But, you know, we do budget conservatively and so I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility that we couldn't make up $500,000 over three years, $582,000. So that, I would, we have to take questions.
I just want to say thank you for putting this together. This answers many of the questions I still had in my little worksheets. So if you read these together, it will be helpful.
I thought it was very helpful information, too.
Yeah, thank you, Nancy.
In fact, it's so helpful that I don't have any questions.
Well, I'm going to say that I appreciate having this detail, having the analysis was particularly desirable, helpful, because I think it's very important that we pursue things that, A, have reality check behind them. And frankly, I only raised the question about the refuse fee, really just simply to say, I think we have to be aware of that distinction. But if we're able to reduce the increase, make the increase $30 as opposed to 50, in a funny way, that seems more acceptable than to, just in terms of proportion. So those are things that you've come up with that are, in my view, very, very helpful.
Okay, anything else? All right, well, let's move on to our next subtopic here, which is the discussion of ability to pay, comparison of Brookline tax rates with peer communities. Mr. Klafter.
Yeah, I would prefer to call it the latter. Because it is a pretty difficult task, I think, to discuss and define someone's ability to pay. So what I did here was take the same approach that we did back in 2008, 2007, 2008, for the last override, and look at what is the quote-unquote "cost of government", how has it changed over time, how is it compared to inflation, how is it compared to some of our similar communities? So that's what we have. So to start, and this was actually one of the slides I used in the first presentation of the OSC back in September of '13. You know, so really just set the stage. So anytime you read stories or hear about tax bills, you know, whether it's from DOR or the Globe, whatever, they always focus on the average single-family tax bill, because in most communities you have a large number of single-family homes. In Brookline, they only make up about 28% of the total residential parcels and condos make up about 60. So what we've done over the years is used an average residential tax bill, which takes all of your residential properties, as opposed to just focusing on single families. So based on the average residential, we were the 35th in the state at $8,434. And if you look at the little box at the bottom, it shows two things. One, what's changed from '05 to '15, so after the last decade. And two, it shows a difference between the average single-family and average residential. So for example, looking at 2005 on the right, Brookline was $10,029, which was the second highest single-family tax bill. However, on an average residential basis, it drops all the way down on '27. Now compare that in 2015, have the fifth highest average single-family tax bill and the 35th highest residential tax bill. So just to kind of set the stage for, you know, what our baseline is. So how's our tax bill growth compared? And this is something we actually did for the fiscal policy review committee back in 2011, somewhat, I don't think we ever expected to get down this path, but when we were talking about levels of debt and we started looking at why other communities had such higher levels of debt and it had to do a lot with debt exclusions. And then that means increases in tax bills. So we put this chart together and I've since updated it. In the same timetable, '05 to '15, and these are some of our typical comps, you know, some of them are triple A's, actually I think all but one or two are in the triple A's. And I also put the statewide averages down below. So it shows two things, again, using Brookline as an example. So the single-family tax bill, average single-family tax bill has grown 36% over the 10 years on an average residential basis, which I just said is what we should use, it's grown by a third, 33%. So if you look at this data set, we have the, actually I think I forgot to change that. We have the second lowest tax bill. I got some late data from Cambridge, which for reasons I think you all know, their data is kind of crazy.
I was going to say, why aren't they even on this chart?
God bless them, they got a great tax base. But so aside from Cambridge, we have the lowest growth over a decade. And you can look up and down this and, you know, some of these are pretty staggering. It has to do, again, with debt exclusions and operating overrides. And I believe these don't even include those communities that adopted the CPA. So, you know, we've done a pretty good job of, you know, maintaining or a good job of having a moderate growth in our tax bill. The second thing, the second poll that showed, that's shown there is, in fiscal '15, there's data for 323 communities, because not everybody's had to get their data and yet plus the 13 or 14 communities that have got the residential exemptions never included, still a good data set out of 351. Over 323, the growth in tax bill, the average tax bill, is in the bottom 20%. In other words, 80% of the 323 communities in the state had tax bills rise faster than the town of Brookline. So again, I think we've done a pretty good job of not growing our taxes at an unacceptable rate. So on to the cost of government. So then this was something we developed back in our way and looked at the things you pretty much have to pay for. Taxes, your water sewer bill and your refuse bill, although you actually have a choice in the refuse bill. But, so what, you know, we've got 20, what's that, 22 years of data here. The bottom box is show since fiscal '93. And then just to focus on the bottom box, fiscal '06, you see that the average annual growth in these three items is 3%. And over that decade, it's about 30%. So on average, growing about 3%. So how's that compare to inflation? Well, so I've modified these to, well, I've adjusted these to reflect inflation and put them into $1993. And what you see is that over the past decade, the cost has averaged about 1% above inflation. So above inflation by about 1%, which is actually, if you think about it, pretty impressive over the last couple of years when there's been some pretty low inflationary environment. And if you look at it over the entirety of the data set, it's about 1.3% again. So the point of this is to say that, you know, the cost of government onto the taxpayers and ratepayers in Brookline has been pretty close to the growth of inflation over the time, about a 1% increase above. over the, over the time, about a 1% increase above over this period. So another thing we did in our way was we tried to measure the cost of government by different ways, and, um, I remember having migraines, working with some economists as to what's the best way of measuring the income. So, we looked at a couple of different ways, on a per capita basis, um, on a median household income basis, and on a median family income basis. So what I did was I just, you know, trended this to see if there was any major fluctuations in any of the three, um, measures. And you can see for yourself that it's pretty consistent. So, you know, no matter how you measure it, well, in these three ways, uh, the cost of government has remained relatively stable over the past 20 years. So how do we compare-
Can I just say, Sean, I, I, when I first looked through this, I thought this was one of the more impressive sets of data analysis, and I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you didn't have too much migraine.
No, I didn't have migraine this time, it was back in the way-
Oh, okay.
-in town, and I said it's leverage-
Leverage an economist, you know, leverage it.
Um, so then we looked at, um, our comparables. Um, again, most of these are triple A's, but also we, um, from time to time, choose some communities that are more like us, um, in terms of size of community, uh, population, that type of stuff. Um, so, got the total, again, same concept, refuse fees, water and sewer, property taxes, what was it in, uh, '98, on '07, in '15. And if you look at from '15 to '07, we've got the second lowest growth at 26.4% behind, again, Cambridge. Um, which is, it's actually pretty close, though. Dead water, sewer rates have actually grown faster than as it appears. Um, and we excluded, if you're wondering why some of the triple A communities are excluded, it's because not all of them are in the MWRA, so was, we, I couldn't get the data. MWRA publishes an annual rate survey that actually calculates an average, um, water and sewer bill for community. So, if you just look up and down there again, the change over, over a, um, what's that, an eight-year period for Brookline is about 26%. And other than Cambridge, um, you know, it's the lowest. And some of these are, you know, see Welsley at 48.5%, Lexington at 44%. That really reflects some significant, um, debt exclusion votes and some operating overrides. And this is one, um, it looks different, but I basically took it from the, um, report that was put together by the Community Foundation, and it's really, you know, just to show, I shouldn't say just, it's really to show that there have been some, uh, significant changes in the distribution of, uh, family income in the town of Brookline. And this can be interpreted, I'm sure, many different ways, but, you know, when you're talking about ability to pay, I mean, I know the override study committee did a very in-depth, um, report on the ability to pay, which is, you know, it's a standalone, totally separate, uh, from this. But you do see the change in, um, distribution, you see, um, a lot higher percentage at the higher end, and you see a bit of a squeeze in the, uh, middle end of, of the distributions. So really, just wanted to put up here, because I know that this was talked about with the override study committee, and, uh, the report put together by the Community Foundation also spoke to it. So, as I said at the beginning, it doesn't really, this presentation doesn't speak to the affordability piece. Um, it's really an attempt to show what this town has done over the past decade-plus, trying to manage its growth in asking taxpayers and ratepayers for more of their money. Um, and as I think the data shows, we've done a pretty good job of managing that.
Sean, do we have a, just a rough guideline number on what each million dollars in override does to, to the average tax bill?
So from last week, or two weeks ago?
I have to keep being reminded of this.
Yeah.
Hasn't sunk in yet.
So, I think each million is worth 0.6%, if my memory is correct. So, um, looking at the bottom box, at a, just pick the middle number, $9 million override, it's 5%, $535 for a single family, $163 for a condo, and $1170 for a, uh, commercial. So, pretty much, you know, divide that by nine, I'd give you a pretty good, pretty good estimate for that. So I know each 1% is worth point, I mean, each million dollars is 0.6% in the average tax bill. But look at it that way, think if you divide 535 by nine, you'll come up with a pretty good approximation.
Questions? Another, another excellent presentation. We're really-
Andy is going to do it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, we're really whittling this down at this point, and I know it's almost 10 o'clock-
You cannot skip my sidewalk snow-
No, 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 we're there. Um, I know, I'm just wondering if there's more for Sean, and really, again, a very thorough presentation, so I don't, I don't really have anything further to ask about this one. Thank you, Sean, great work, great work.
All this material, by the way, gets posted on the town's override site, so if you, uh, have lost it or want to reference, all of these presentations from the beginning are all posted, so I, I find that helpful myself.
Yeah.
All right. Last part of our, uh, discussion for tonight involves the, uh, proposal by, which was, has been championed by Selectman Daily, that as part of the override, we include some additional, um-
I know.
-fundraising for, uh, additional sidewalks, snow clearing equipment, and, you know, four members of this board reacted, well, we haven't seen a presentation describing the need for it at this point, and that seems to be the threshold question. So, we've invited Commissioner Papa Sturgeon to address that question, and I turn it over to you, Commissioner Papa Sturgeon.
Thank you. I hate following Sean on presentations, but, um, I'll do my best. Um, the Sidewalk Snow Removal Task Force that was empowered by town meeting, uh, this past spring, uh, has been meeting under the direction of, uh, Town Administrator Clutner. And, uh, we've, uh, been deliberating many of the issues surrounding the removal of snow on sidewalks, uh, and they have identified, while the work is not complete, they have identified, uh, certain areas, uh, that are of concern, uh, and that, uh, we perhaps can do a better job at. Uh, the chief area that, that I'm, I'm not really going to address tonight, but I'm just going to mention, uh, that was brought out by the task force, is, uh, doing a better job at public education and awareness of the sidewalk bylaw, uh, and then along with that, uh, the, uh, the enforcement of said bylaw, uh, doing a better job at that, particularly in the commercial areas. Uh, the concern of the task force, and mine at the outset of this, was that, uh, that perhaps, uh, because the town does the initial plowing of sidewalks in commercial areas, uh, that a lot of the business owners are not aware that even though we do that, that it's their responsibility, uh, to maintain that sidewalk, uh, you know, for the duration of the storm, and then afterwards, in terms of, uh, of not only clearing it with, from snow, but, uh, of making sure that it's safe and it's not slippery. That was one of the major concerns of the proponent of the, uh, resolution at town meeting, Frank Carroll. But there are some concerns, uh, that involve DPW operations, which is what I'm going to talk about tonight a little bit, uh, that, uh, we certainly can do a better job at. We've identified certain, some areas. Uh, number one is that, that we think that we can do a better job of doing the initial clearing of commercial areas with our trap, sidewalk tractors. One of the concerns was that we weren't getting out there early enough, uh, in, in removing snow in commercial areas from sidewalks, and we weren't coming back and following through on it, uh, during the duration of the storm. So, so one of the objectives that I have is to make sure that we do, uh, commercial sidewalk clearing along the routes that we do, uh, in a more thorough and timely fashion. Uh, in addition to that, uh, one of the other concerns was the existence, particularly after large snowfalls, of fairly large snowbanks, uh, along the commercial areas that prohibit folks from getting access to parking meters, uh, and also for parking in the commercial areas. This has led in the past to us doing full-blown snow removal operations, where we have to work, uh, with trucks and loaders to actually remove the snowbanks, particularly along the gutters, uh, so that folks can have access to the parking meters, uh, and hence the, the, uh, the commercial areas. So we think that we've come up with a method where we can do a better job and a more efficient job at at least clearing snowbanks along the gutter line, uh, to then expose the parking meters. And we also think that one of the last concerns of the, of the task force was that, that other, other sidewalks, other public sidewalks that are but public property, uh, for instance, parks, playgrounds, and school buildings, and other town buildings, uh, are not being done in a, in a timely fashion. In other words, we're waiting, uh, too long after the storm to get out and clear those sidewalks. And clearly, uh, you know, when we do fight a snowstorm, we have priorities, and of course, our number one priority is, is, uh, keeping the roads open for public safety, and then we have other priorities that follow with that, uh, such as the clearing, uh, the schools, uh, to allow schools to reopen. Uh, and then unfortunately, uh, sidewalk plowing, this is in non-commercial areas, but on sidewalks that we do plow, uh, butting, uh, public property, uh, are usually the lowest priority, because, uh, we need to free up equipment and manpower to be able to do that. So we also think that, uh, at the urging of the task force, that we can do a better job at clearing sidewalks, uh, on public property, uh, in a, in a more efficient and timely manner. However, in order to do those things and to meet those three objectives, uh, it's not necessarily going to take additional manpower, but it's going to take additional equipment. Uh, and the proposal that I'm going to put forward to you tonight is, uh, to remind you that last year, you were gracious enough to approve the purchase of a new sidewalk tractor, uh, with a snow thrower and a, uh, sander on that, and that has been, uh, really great for the, uh, for increasing the efficiency of our program. In order to get it done even better, we need another tractor, uh, to augment our fleet. Right now, we have nine pieces of equipment that are dedicated to sidewalk clearing, a 10th piece of equipment would go a long way to ensuring that we could clear commercial sidewalks better and quicker, as well as clearing, um, sidewalks that are but, but public property quicker, quicker. As far as the, uh, the clearing of the snowbanks, uh, along the gutter line, in the years past, like I said, we've been using, uh, front-end loaders and trucks to do that, very labor-intensive. We have found, uh, a, a piece of equipment that, that will allow us to do that very quickly now. It's a actual, a, uh, independent snow thrower, a very large snow thrower, uh, that mounts on the front of our front-end loaders, it takes the place of the bucket. It's a self, a, um, self-powered, diesel-powered unit that will, uh, run the gutter line from a front-end loader and actually throw the snow directly on the back of a pick, uh, dump truck. So that wouldn't, uh, eliminate the need to have to do labor-intensive loading and hauling. This would allow us to do continuous removal of snow on the snowbank, and, and if we had equipment such as that, we could probably do it as a matter of routine in every single storm. In other words, as part of the snowfighting of the storm, get out there and actually remove snow along the gutter line. Uh, the tractor is, is, is now priced at about $145,000 for a BOMD unit, and the purchase of two of those, uh, snow thrower units to, uh, to fit our, uh, front-end loaders, uh, comes to about $55,000. So the total proposal I'm putting forth to you tonight, uh, is for an additional equipment cost of about $195,000 to be able to accomplish the major objectives of the Sidewalk Snow Removal Task Force.
I, I just want to add, and, uh, part of the reason I asked Andy to, to give, uh, this information is, we have never had an override in which there was not some benefit to the town side of the budget. And, um, I, I, I happen to be not only a member of the Sidewalk Snow Committee, but also a co-chair of Brookline is an Age-Friendly City. And I know that these, that, obviously, not too bad this year, but in the last couple of years, the, um, state of the sidewalks in the commercial areas, the slipperiness, the, um, that, that made many seniors feel uncomfortable, uh, trying to come out at all, um, was, was a serious issue, and I think this would be, uh, have some appeal to many people.
Commissioner Papa Sturgeon, uh, thanks for this, and it's helpful to, to have a number to think about now. Uh, we just reviewed the CIP, uh, these, these items weren't, weren't on it, is-
Yeah, these aren't capital improvement items. If anything, these would be capital equipment items as part of the operating-
Part of your operating budget?
Uh, but these are actually over and above what our normal allotment for capital equipment would be.
Right. But what I'm, what I'm about to ask you is, is there anything in your, your regular capital equipment budget that you would backburner to do these things first?
Uh, perhaps. I can't really say offhand, but it would require us to relook at our, I mean, we have a very defined, uh, equipment replacement program that we follow. Uh, you, as you know, the, the override allotment of $700,000 a year for capital equipment replacement, which we follow, uh, very rigidly. Uh, so it, I mean, the short answer is if we would defer, if we had to defer the replacement of pieces of equipment to purchase this equipment, it would, you would throw the remainder of the program behind. It's not to say that we couldn't, perhaps, look at whom to do it.
Or maybe if it was done over two years, or, you know, there could be a-
Perhaps.
I'm not saying no, Selectman Daily, I'm saying, you saw all the, all the townside cuts that are being expected, another $500,000 off of the, off of the, the townside contributions. You know, I, I understand the kind of the, the marketing value of having something-
I mean, I think there should have been some other things, but I, I think that I was, uh, as I asked people if they had any other items on the town side, I, I think I was being, uh, working against the trend that they are hearing from Mr. Clutner and Mr. Cronin about not asking for things. I think it's a very tough sell for senior citizens, um, in particular, I'm thinking of, to say, vote for this big override, and you get nothing out of it, except a larger tax bill.
Well, I would love to be able to tell them that, that we're going to face, I, this equipment sounds like just a ticket, frankly. I would love to tell them that, that, that this, this equipment is being done, but it's, it doesn't have to be part of the override, so. But anyway, we don't have to decide this now, but I-
Can I bring up one, uh, an issue that Stan Spiegel brought up in an email to us all and to the town administrator? And the, the point of which was, in a no-override scenario, uh, there, the town is going to absorb some of the cuts. So, could we not, in the language in the ballot question, be stating, um, X dollars, whatever the X is, to go for schools and some of the items that would be affected? Uh, one problem, of course, assuming we could do it legally, um, one problem is, we haven't identified those exactly. Uh, town administrator made a presentation to us of some, some possibilities, but we, we haven't gone down a road, or perhaps you haven't gone down a road yet, of, of finalizing those recommendations. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, uh, well, first of all, I think, you know, next week, we do have scheduled the identification of some potential override questions, not only the amount, but also how we're going to format those. So I've had, as I think you've been copied on, a little ongoing dialogue with Stanley about this idea. Initially, I was skeptical because, uh, you know, the way I was reading the Department of Revenue materials, it was suggesting that you can't say, uh, you can't identify in a question things that would happen if the override didn't pass. However, as you point out, we could create a budget that would, in effect, um, start with a no-override and then, and then add back in. I think the board needs to really have some good discussion and thought about what is, what is the, um, trying to be transparent without being confusing. Now, I, I've, all I hear about is school enrollment, and that's how we've been talking about, and so if we start to change that message, I, I am, I am thinking that there is a bit of a disconnect. But I, I want to think about it some more, and, uh, and as I said, this, we'll, we'll develop a whole series of different kind of questions that you would, you would consider.
And can, um, somebody contact the Department of Revenue and have a chat with them on-
Yes.
-how appropriate this is?
Yeah. There is a lot of, um, there is a lot of latitude on how you define the question, but it has to be something that would actually cert, be an appropriation as opposed to cutting after the fact. So you'd have to really create, redo the budget in that fashion that I mentioned, you'd have to, um, assume the budget, uh- You'd have to assume the budget, a no override budget and then add back.
Well.
But I will talk to DOR a little bit.
Wouldn't we be required for the, I mean, I guess we call it the financial plan, but in order to create a financial plan, we have to create it without an override because it hasn't passed yet.
No, we, well, we're having the override before we pass the budget.
No, 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 no. The plan that we publish in February.
Yes. Yes, if you.
I think in the past, I think the last time around, I think that the budget, maybe Shaun probably remembers better than I do, but I think the budget assumed the override would pass.
Several budgets prepared.
No. No, I think we'd be obliged to do a financial plan premised on no override. You could have scenarios, a budget without an override because it hasn't passed yet and there's no other way to do it. And then a desired budget, which would be the budget with the additional revenue.
Right. Remember too, that town meeting follows fairly closely the election for the override. So we have to be prepared to go into town meeting with a no override scenario should it fail, or with an override scenario should it pass. And the only way to do that is to have a completed plan that's been vetted by us and the advisory committee. So the advisory committee makes its, has two motions in its pocket.
So Shaun, tell us, what did we do in '08?
That was, that's what was.
That's what I remember.
On our way, the town administrator's financial plan assumed no override.
Right.
So there were municipal cuts baked in. And then I know in the budget message at the time, it said, you know, if an override were to pass, this is what would be restored. Then there was some things that we actually didn't restore. But then when we worked with the advisory committee, we actually kept an ongoing spreadsheet that was, you know, with an override, without an override, advisory committee, selectmen.
Right.
And then ultimately, you know, we knew two weeks before, and then we had a, I actually think we baked it into the combined reports, if not, it was a supplemental that had the final recommendation of the advisory committee and the selectmen.
But in order to be prepared to pull the trigger on that recommendation, you've got to be going in parallel in the budget process.
But what was the question that was supposed to the voters that specific?
No.
The actual question, it spoke, I know there was two questions, and the second question spoke specifically to elementary real language and then within.
An extend, an addition to school, adding tie to the school day.
It also talked about repair and maintenance, it talked about parks and open space within the question.
I think Selectmen Franco can be more specific.
There we go.
I can read you the questions if that would be helpful.
Why not?
Question one, 1A, was, shall the town of Brookline be allowed to assess a total of $5.4 million in additional real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding school, 1.5 million, police, 370,000, fire, 150,000, and library, 80,000? Departments, repair and maintenance of school and town buildings, parks, streets and sidewalks, including sidewalk snow clearing equipment, 1.5 million, lengthened instructional school day by 20 minutes per day totaling 100 minutes per week, 1.8 million, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2008? And 1B, would shall the town of Brookline be allowed to assess a total of 6.2 million additional real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the schools, 1.5 million, police, 370,000, fire, 150,000, and library, 80,000? Departments, repair and maintenance of school and town buildings, parks, streets and sidewalks, including sidewalk snow clearing equipment, 1.5 million, lengthen the instructional school day by 20 minutes, totaling 100 minutes per week, 1.8 million, and the world language programs for K through six and all elementary schools, 800,000, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2008?
That sounds like it was much more extensive on the town side and, you know, I wasn't part of those conversations in those days, but it sounds like that override was only partly about schools. As Mr. Kleckner points out, this has been about schools. And I don't really want to tell the seniors that the only way that they're going to get their sidewalks, the sidewalks cleared any better is if they vote themselves a tax increase. I would like to report to them that we've got, you know, a plan for dealing with the sidewalks and it doesn't depend on voting a override.
Well, that's a slightly different question from the one that was sort of the general one was posed, and that is, in creating a financial plan, we would be creating a no override budget in the financial plan with additional scenarios based on, I assume, the revenues that would be available depending on the questions that are put on the ballot. So, yeah.
Are you saying that the non-school items in that ballot question really reflected cuts that were in the budget for those departments that were going to deal with, that were going to go to the schools? If not, because that wasn't my, I wasn't town meeting member at that point, but I don't remember that being.
Some were actual cuts and some.
The police would have been a cut.
Right.
The library would have been a cut.
Right.
The repair and maintenance and parks and open space were new things. So it was a mix.
But were the cuts related to shortfalls on the school side? I don't think so.
No. It was an overall town-school deficit.
Right. It was a structural deficit. The issue was addressing the structural deficit.
Funds were going to be shunted from the police department to the school.
No, 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 and I'm not suggesting that. All I'm saying is that should there be no override, we have to present a full picture of what the impact of that would be. And although we cannot, as the selectmen, show the detail in the school budget, we can certainly show what the allocation to the school department would be with no override.
We can, and I assume we will.
The question is, will it be in the ballot question?
Yeah, that's a separate, I wasn't, I was sort of throwing those two things together, but the reality is that depending, at least what we've got here is an example of a ballot question which illustrates the level of detail that could be.
Now, when you're constructing your sample ballot questions for next week's discussion, what's your thinking, or is this something you're going to develop over the next week? So I guess you don't have to answer this now, of, you know, how much detail is going to go into the question? Like, we saw in 2008, it was fairly specific. Now, the scenario here is a little different. You know, we have a chart here that is the superintendent's recommendation. I don't know how much of this chart would go into the question.
You know, we're still working on it, I think, but I think we'll give you a range of specific to general and maybe somewhere in the middle. The city's, the Department of Revenue doesn't care how specific or how general you are. It just needs to be something you are going to be funding with an appropriation.
But bear in mind that for one, I believe it's one year, if you're very specific, you must absolutely follow that for one year.
Right. You have to spend it on that which we.
You want to be careful about being too specific.
Well, we've got a history of doing exactly what we say, so I'm not afraid of.
Yeah. Right. And in fact, I think that's a desirable thing to the extent that we have, we can point to that as the Brookline practice.
Absolutely.
Good. Okay, I think we are.
We have one item on the.
No, no, I think we're finished with our override discussion for this evening. We have one additional item as Selectmen Daily notes, which is appointment of candidates to, and I lost my agenda again.
Park and Recreation.
Thank you, Park and Recreation Commission. Mr. Kleckner, would you take over that vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we have three expiring terms. We have the three incumbents interested in reappointment and an additional candidate, and so I will read them off in order as they appear, anyway, the incumbents. Clara Bachelor.
Aye.
Dan Lyons.
Aye.
Nancy O'Connor.
Aye.
Larry Oni. Okay, so the first three are reappointed to the Park and Recreation.
And that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you everyone for your attention and we'll see you next week.